Before that, I was, people could call me and question the road or just mad and I would, I wouldn't say get involved, but you know, EDA, you know, send them over to the board and get, now I'm just telling them that.
Oh, because uh.
Risk of liability.
If you're, if you know about it, you're.
Well, we're not engineers. It's like out here, this last space. Has a line in front, but doesn't have a line in back, which tells me it's not a parking spot. And because it's so close to that crosswalk, then I'm sure it's not a parking spot, so that cars can see people coming across the crossroad. On the other end, it has white paint out there with the checkboard, the yellow, this is the emergency one, but down here it doesn't. So my worry is somebody would be prepared to murder.
You know, I did call, I asked the city police about that last week and they came and looked at it.
Now, I've just reverted back to my age sixteen driver test, there's not a line at the front and a line at the back.
Yeah, that was already.
Yes, shall we, let's go ahead and get started.
Okay. Morning. Okay, we have a few things on your consent agenda today. Uh, one is.
Only you.
Cause we're number twenty-four, so it must be a few.
That's the biggest violation.
So we have a resolution and the matter designating existing path on Loop Road to be a part of the White Salmon Safe Routes to School District or Network and, you know, it's just basically says this is their right.
Does this um, Costa County, do you think today or Costa County, do you think in ten years when it needs repaved or?
They could be eligible for grant fee.
Public authorities did have an opportunity to review that and they did make edits, so it strictly retains to Quikitac County as a priority.
Right, and then it's that path, cause they wanted us to say the state stuff and look at all that.
Right. I guess I'm just trying to lead it to this, in three years, are they gonna come back and tell us that we need to wipe the path to speed and evolve its other.
No, we go with it, it says it.
It is what it is.
And it is in the, we're in it and it's in their stuff too, that this, you know, no additional expense, no this, no extra maintenance, no extra anything, cause that was a concern, it's what you designated, then does that mean? You know, cause the other designations have been in the city limits, most apart, I'm not sure of the part of how, it's a funeral.
Yeah, right, and I just haven't seen this trail, so I wasn't sure.
That's good, it's.
That's good, it turned into a six foot wide trail.
It already is, yeah.
It's a well-used trail.
It's a well-used trail.
It's a trail, cause it doesn't have direct asphalt, very similar to a cycle, it's a different name for it, because it functions a little bit differently. But it's well-used there. I dealt with these on the west side, like big years, years ago. Schools wanna have safe routes, some schools do, some schools don't. Scenario, but, and so they can apply for grants, get the crossings and things like that. That's why.
I would, I, the one that I would have been, I would have been a little more concerned if I was the state, cause the person that's on the state, that's the state's partners. Potential liability, you know, cause there's no grade separation though. It's literally the shoulder of the road. Cause they did rumble strips, that's all it is, so it's. No, that's not.
No, that's not.
That's not allowed on the.
That's straight, I don't know, cause that's all on the state right away, which I don't know why that was.
That was removed. Anything that was, that was state.
It was not our okay.
We did not, if we don't want to assume responsibility for it.
That was kind of my, you know, as long as we're not, we should, a lot of responsibility either legally or for maintenance and everything.
Item nineteen, grants to award small works contract for Oliver's floor recovery, and this is the contract with the Pioneer Center to redo second floor restrooms. And then a notice to advertise, request for proposals for to select a contract by management of counties to replace the county's current financial system. And then we have some pay estimates up there also. We have a pay estimate one for Thompson. And that's for the county Y, Dipo's signing contract, that's ninety-nine thousand dollars, and that is federal rate first grant. Uh, pay estimate one for Central Washington. This is uh. But uh, this is, this should be the last pay estimate, the central one and not pay estimate. The final. Doesn't include the retainage, but it's the final for the Darlin project. It's also SGP project, so there's grand reimbursement for that. And then there's the release of retainage to James Dean construction and the amount of three thousand six hundred dollars, six hundred twenty-four dollars, and this is for the Roosevelt bring upgrade project as part of the first phase of the Roosevelt Favor project. Uh, as far as design work, grant funded. Uh, contractors working on the traveling highway now, selling signs. Uh, Darlin said the project's complete and Roosevelt Favor, Shoulder Rock is done, we're working on guard rail signs. And we got one, we got one coat of striping on, if, you know, once the landfill starts to put gravel, sand on the road, then we'll be done. Striping it for the year. We'll try to get a second one on, you know, if we don't, then we'll just ask for reduction.
Okay. So the land, the graveling of the.
The sand? Yeah, they have, we provided the sand. And they like quite bitter. It was a gravel road last. Today, road design, Courtney Road, we're finalizing the plants with the ad on twelve twenty-nine. Uh, Quikitac Path, we're still working with Parks and Wash Dot and the parking lots are still getting process of design. We're actually moved this week, yesterday, so we're kind of in that mode ourselves right now, so we're gonna do that. Uh, maintenance, we're cleaning the ditch on Old Mountain, grading spot graveling, of course reacting to weather on the east side. West side, we're brushing and using the travel plate areas and reacting to weather. The new, this building, uh, their report's middle scheduled for this week. He sent to DOE and then DOE has thirty to sixty days, I think, of determination. Most of flooring is in, uh, been reestablished, re-put and reinstalled, and they're installing rubber base. Furniture's still trickling in, we're actually scheduled to receive chairs, chairs of Shelby unit this week. Supposed to come, or actually today. Interior doors, we're still working on those, blinds, they're, they're scheduled to come in this week also. I'll see it here. HVAC units, they're still tweaking those, they will be for a while. Uh, we actually have some offices in our realm that are are, are, they're like uh, airplane hangars also, so, how are you guys?
Are they off today?
Yeah. And yours, they're off.
That was very nice, and I was talking on the phone, but I realized I was not shouting.
It was one room.
It's quite quiet.
Yeah.
I don't know which is better.
Yeah, we're still working. Ours are just noisy because we can't leave them on the whole forever. Painting and sheet rock, being the suburbs gets to be here all work, they got, at least this week, they got quite fit. Still, uh, courthouse entry, um, vestibule has the stucco is complete, first coat of paint's been put on, we're still have the cover on it. It's still painting and finishing up, gluing inside. We're hoping to have it done, is we, but we pull him off and do things here, don't keep him over our department. So, replacements, like we said, we sent out our small works bid for asbestos contract for the remodel of the other year old offices. That will open in January, I think, fourth. And radio sites, uh, Ward and I have pretty much, we hammered out an agreement. We have one district already approved, they've had some minor tweaks, hasn't been a big deal, made those corrections. They're on board. It'll be with the other district, fifteenth, and should get that one taken care of. They were pretty small. Um, one was, I put in a reopener for fifty years. They're new to this, so they would like to reopen our tent. I don't know that that's a big deal. So I, I was fine with that. They would also like to, this is a little bit bigger, but I think it's doable. They would like us to uh, bring power or have the ability, not bring power, but have the ability to like, we'll put a Y in the con, or in our conduit or something in case they later on want to have power brought into a learning facility or something up there, if they wanna build in the future. It's kinda, it's not really that costly, gives us good. Gives them, they feel like they'd get something out of the situation. Um, and then they added a cattle guard, they have defense office. Would be put in, they actually put the fencing in.
Did you agree to the ten year reopener?
I agreed to the ten year reopener, but it's still, um, it's not uncommon, we typically do. I just went for fifty because the contract is so long. And the reopener is only on the, if the site goes up, you know, up or down in cost, but the mitigation has to be the same. I mean, so what it is, is it's a reopener to look at, does our mitigation that we have for the cost of the land that we're tying up add any, is, does it change it? So did the land value go up enough that it, the tax cess值go up? Being a resource land, I'd be shocked if the tax cess值go up at all.
You can't just renegotiate a lease based on.
No, the lease is not a renegotiation, the only part of it is, is, is the part of what our payment is, which is pretty much not, except for we grade once every five years, maybe our driving up the debt. I mean, I could push back and go twenty.
Oh, they were.
Well, that's what, that's what they, 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 and the main reason was is they said they haven't done this, and they just wanna see that work. I had fifty years in there, honestly, cause it's typically half of what, what your lease is for. And they don't have any issue with, they don't have any issue with the hundred, cause that was my question, they have new, or buy. Okay, we're also working on the design, uh, we repeat regularly. Now, uh, we're in the process of purchasing equipment. And we kinda talked a little bit, and I wanna just make sure everybody's aware, we're on record, that we are ordering equipment that is obviously basic. Is being as is, we have a simulcast system and all the equipment has to manage. So unless you're changing radio frequencies, that would be really, I fought with a couple different consultants and things, it drives me nuts that somebody would set this up this way, but that's the industry standard.
So, uh, yeah, more on that obsolete equipment. We talked about the narrowband versus, what band are you talking?
The, the radios themselves. They no longer manufacture, we're getting them special built, but this, they quit manufacturing them at this year. December twenty twenty.
Right, so.
They no longer manufacture, so then.
That's part of our whole radio system. Upgrade over time is we have to replace all the radios on the specific fan. All the other stations will have to get a new one quickly.
Yeah, if we got a new one up there, then the project grows. If we put new ones up there, then we have to, whatever, whatever radio we put, whatever channel.
Change everybody else.
We have to change everybody else.
So that's why we're putting obsolete.
Yeah, I'm not excited about that, but that's, yeah.
Have enough spares, so when a couple go down, it's gonna be more years.
Yes, we, we should, we have this conversation, we should be able to get six, eight years on it. And we'll pick up.
Well, that's what I was asking about, but narrowband, this was part of the meeting, I think. So we'll get up to twenty twenty-two here in a couple weeks. So, uh.
So, so I have.
Are we, so we just finished, like with the big dig over there. We're sending in our information so they can let us know if we need to put the test codes in or?
Yes.
And what does our information show that we're sending?
Our information, actually, we're not sending, the contractor's sending. They're showing that they reached the limits, you know, they dug till they get where they didn't find anything. But DOE, that doesn't always necess, necessarily, the fact that they don't, just because you've reached that, doesn't mean that they won't say, you gotta put in test, it's any. Like, yeah, we, we went to the point where we reached the limits. Yeah, but it doesn't, that, like I said, I.
It, but is there, what's the, what's our ability to push back on that, if we feel like that's not? You know, or is in this case, is DOE, whatever they say, is just, you just have to do it. But I'm assuming there is both expense and kind of some, you know, that's future potential liability.
Yes.
That I would rather eliminate if I can, and just because some DOE staff person, of course, if I, if I have no, I have no skin in the game, of course, you know, it's the, what's the belts and suspenders, kinda, you know, if I can just, oh, I just, this is what I want. And so you just do it, and it's like, yeah, prove it.
Well, I guess we see what they request, and you know, if it's really out there, then you basically talk to the PA.
You know, you know, at what point is it, uh, we're not doing that?
You know.
I'm feeling cranky, where it's like, you know, just fill the damn hole in.
Well.
What tank are you talking about? I don't even know what you're talking about. You're crazy.
I said, I've seen him do some crazy things, I know.
I mean, let's not get wound up till.
Yeah, I say, we just wait, see what, see what they say.
The only thing I was gonna, is uh, or under the workshop. Would it be good for us to have staff from the various departments here? Come up with the countywide policy and how to answer one question else.
Yeah, it's, it's, it is, it's on the agenda as far as that, because it's, it's not unique to a single department.
No, no, we get ours.
They're, they're getting more and more out. Same thing is happening, it started with other departments that we need to figure out, like, I was just thinking that we should invite them to be here so they can be in the loop for whatever to help with on that one.
Yes, I assume these folks that have a specific interest or specific experience.
We're experiencing it now.
I know you are, so, yeah, I would, I would think it would be.
Or someone from your department also be here. Well, it could be helpful for me to be able to ask questions or for you to have your input, and you're gonna be able to see, so.
Yeah.
That was very kind.
We'll, uh, I won't be here, so I won't be here, but uh, so be on vacation, but Ward, he'll probably be here to tip the facts.
It means back. I know that, was he actually really off? Cause I see that he responded to a public records request.
Yeah, yesterday, he was out of weddies, so. You know, and he wanted a guilt on it, I wanna say out of the way.
I guess when people are answering bills on vacation, that's not. Not, well, it's not, you're supposed to be resting.
True.
Is not answering public records requests. That's, at least that's not my definition of a vacation. I like to.
That wasn't my definition of a public records request either.
No, I agree, but anyway. Yeah.
You're gonna read the lawyer's security card?
Yeah.
Bring him up or nothing.
Yes.
Yeah, that's why I was. So would you blame him for the? That's why I wondered, I thought, what's going on? And we had to pull him out, uh, and it's like, you're the only one to fix this. Why didn't we do this? Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, recognition of the holidays, we decided that Jeff Rose is going to sing Ave Maria and. This, we're gonna.
The microphone is already gonna.
Yes, the microphone's ready. How the depth assures us it will go flawless. I do not torture those two.
Yeah.
If they did even.
That explains why we have a hundred and twenty-seven people online. Sorry, it's all false alarm.
Well, I have to thank.
It's working, right?
Yeah. As a segue to Jeff, I do wanna. Think it'll, for me to acknowledge, oh, good work, that team does, during the move into this building, Jeff Shelby, Joe, and Curtis have done an outstanding job of getting each of them up and running. Heard that from a lot of folks, I just wanna acknowledge their hard work for that. And, uh, I'd also like to, which Jeff is still there, I think, these, these folks are under his guidance, but we don't often hear, or I don't often hear attaboys for building the grounds folks. They have also been working diligently, getting everybody set up, as well as take care of all the rest of this stuff throughout the year. So I'd like to be Electric College, Troy, Ben, Dale, Steve, Melanie, Joe, and Joshua. Doing an outstanding job, and we have all of us. It's a joy to work with. I hear that a lot, so. So gentlemen, I'm gonna update you on a few things. To start off this morning's update. Analog phone service, we talked to you about last year. When we're switching analog digital, doing away with long distance codes. Been waiting till the supplemental passed, you know, on your consent agenda, there's two items that will help us implement this. The downside is it could take three to four weeks to get the system up and running, which we take us in January, but we didn't notify the departments, think it's gonna have a chance, to reduce their budgets by that sixty thousand that it typically costs. We added the money IT's budget for twenty twenty-two. So if it does roll into January, we do infer cost, the departments have it, did the rest of these savings, we need to notify those funds, should be.
Save, save return to return.
Into the year. So the good news is, it should be there, in fact, we did this setup. But it'll be nice not having to wait through thousands of pages a month, going bill and long distance codes.
So we will, we will have our codes anymore?
No.
Don't roll the long distance bills.
Yeah. Set wrong, like the, uh, shops and stuff like that, that's why.
So that's, uh, so.
How hard is the transition gonna be as far as the two system, I mean, as, as far as the, is there, you shut this one off, turn this one on, and we're good? Can they run side by side?
What I'm told, there will be no downtime. Okay, I don't know that I believe that. But that's what we're told.
Okay, so it really will be, okay. Cause I wasn't sure of the timing, and honestly, when we moved, I wasn't sure, I, I was waiting the first time I used my phone over here, if I needed my code or the audit, it's like, I don't still did it. It entered your code, so I did, so.
One thing that, this is, uh, Jeff was getting jams, but we talked about something like the insurance building workplace, but we could get that in this year's budget, so. I mean, we could still do the, I take a supplemental to, if we had to create a line item, probably non departamental or something, so, um, only next year we could talk about it, but we didn't get clear direction, so we need to change all those budgets for us, so. It's not a cost increase or decrease, but maybe next year we could make less on price. And then one thing we just wanted to remind you about, because a recent example came up, is nine months ago, we talked to you about the fairgrounds, about purchasing countywide document imaging systems for public records and other things. Recently, go with the retirement juvenile adult software, their juvenile department is attempting this warning, superior court system. It's a legacy system created by the retiring department director, so it has to be replaced. I've talked to Jeff yet over here, Joe, but juvenile, I talked at this one. We have to come up with something else, cause we need to work, we have to on drive with the retirement boy to keep it working. So there are, in time, examples will come up, we're having a enterprise-wide or county-wide system, which is. We do have it on work.
On base.
On base, which, and the expanded other departments would have to pay on base for them to help with that. We have a slow roll, so it's.
So you know the clerk that's just joining us.
Money.
So, you know, we do have that, but it's, I know public health is looking at a system, I think, the purchase with the grant funds, so it would be nice if we had an overall plan, maybe use the A system, the one we have, or another, find another system, and as opposed to the, you know, a hundred thousand dollar plus expense all that, just add departments as we go. But it, it, it's an issue that we. But it, it, it's an issue that we're gonna address at some point. We're gonna have to address it with juvenile quickly. And potentially in Superior Court now. They told me that AOC would use the Association of.
Administrative offices.
There is, is developing one that juvenile would use. But it's, you know, it's space, but it's at least two. So we're gonna have to meet with, uh, the judge and juvenile to figure out what we can do in the short term. So the on base is that, are there other juvenile departments that use that?
I, I am not aware that they are. Um.
Does it have, do you just like add modules?
Yeah, it's like a development platform that you could create basically.
So you're talking about transitioning from on base to image stuff, right?
No, no, I, I actually wanted to clarify that. So, um, Highland is the parent company. And we use one of their vendors called Image Soft. Image Soft is who we work with for our on base document management system. Does that help clarify that?
Provide support.
Yeah.
So Image Soft provides support.
Yes.
For the on base.
Yes, and Highland is the parent company.
Of everything.
Of, yeah, of that, and they also have the true filing module.
My thinking with the county might be, I don't want to give it out against some other thing that they like, and then we decide to go with the on base or whatever. Now you have another place that, that somebody can't run. So I want to make sure that's what we, that correct.
And I'm not suggesting that we wouldn't.
Any direction.
Do an RFP and go out, do a search and see if they're out there and, um, develop it. That way, I don't know if you have issues with on base, that, that who does would be considering expanding.
I, I, I honestly believe it's in the county's best interests to utilize the on base system. It can be, um, if you have, uh, a county administrator who facilitates that. Then they can work with each of the departments to then help set up their, um, filing systems, how they need it. And for the clerk's office, ours is set up into individual case types. And then within those case types, we have the ability to flag documents that are either confidential, so nobody can look at them. So then behind the scenes, those documents cannot be pulled up from people who don't have, don't have the authorization to look at them. Or they go into non-confidential that are public access. And then there is a sealed, um, flag for cases, such as juvenile cases, where they have been sealed. So that's how our sys, our filing system is set up. It has case types and then it has another layer for the whether documents are confidential or not.
I would imagine that all these documents have an easy search feature. You can type in some keywords.
We don't use that feature because ours is all based off a case number. So we input the case number, it pulls up the documents, all the documents for that case.
So I, I'm looking at this as a public request.
But it does have that ability. It's just we don't.
Make sure that we provide all of the documents that we have as opposed to asking other.
We're not asking you for any decision today. We just want to know that it does, it does come up and, and we'll present it now, but, you know, with an issue, I think public health is. Their, uh, what he and I is excited or is thinking of it. So we make them up again. So we just want to bring it to your attention that we do have. Well, I hope what we'll do is rather, because I've always been uncomfortable to get all of these systems. Like every department has its own thing and then our IT is trying to, or they can't because they have support and we have. You know, as much as we can consolidate into a single or as close to that as we can, that can, uh, use a single platform that multiple departments can use. That seems to make a lot more sense because I would imagine in the long run, it's cheaper. It has to be more expensive to have all these individual standalone systems that have their, uh, their maintenance fees and there are all this stuff. You would think there would be some, uh, economy of scale if they're consolidated. But I would imagine the argument or the potential conflict is gonna be finding something that works for everybody that's. Cause, you know, there's a reason these legacy systems are there. Because everybody, there's a constituency for each of them.
Right.
That I know how to do this. I don't want to change.
Right.
Well, if we do something or when we do something, I think we would. Probably better term for the slow roll, instead of being the whole county once, we have elected offices, departments. Then we do a department for office by office as, you know, and it will be customized to the, to each office and department. And not basically forced upon folks and it's not overwhelming, uh, IT or any department. We can do that. So with that being said, I also don't want to spend the thirty thousand dollar upfront fee for each department. If we could do it once and then just everybody have the right time.
Yeah.
And be like, we're, we're fixing our processes. We got multiple, you know, groups that all have the same problem. We gotta jump in a twenty first century. So that's why if you want to go with an RFP, um, and see what, what, who can provide the services for all the departments that are interested in going paperless to that degree. That would be something that I think would be valuable in time. It's time saving along that. And if that's something we might be able to roll completely under IT so that we have the internal people who understand one system, whether it's Image Soft, Image Soft, the public health. They do clerks, they do, you know, they've got a different thing for everyone. Well, we'll talk about it. We'll get it, see what's involved. And if we did it, our, we want to include obviously other departments on a system.
Can I just add that, I mean, we really honestly already have a contract with OnBase to do the county. And that was set up in, I believe, two thousand twelve before I took office, where Glenn and Sondra worked together to establish the countywide, um, document management system. And licenses were purchased, um, to start that. So if it was to stay with OnBase. It's just a matter of adding licenses. I'm sure the maintenance fee would go up with those like, like licenses that you purchase. But I don't believe there would be that initial, um, uh, purchase of the software. Just my two cents.
We can look into both.
Okay.
On base, ask those questions about developing, developing it. My department or this unit, if there's cost savings, we'll look at the both of those options and go back. Get further guys. Thank you for that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
But. One more thing, we just wanted, um, I don't know, to seek clarification or to make sure we're on the same pace. So during our budget presentation, we talked about approaching each department and office and talking, discussing with them. Reducing those that have a laptop and a desktop to just a laptop and a dot. And we haven't rolled that out yet. This is weekly, replacing a desktop and a laptop in the department's system, keeping the desktop for other uses. And they didn't, they don't know, and I have all that gas. So make sure one of the same page, we roll that out of the departments. We will meet with them in the offices to make sure that maybe some cases where it doesn't. But every machine requires a license. So when one turns into two, now we have a double, double.
Okay. License that they pull one of every throw and one.
So, yeah.
Quite a bit of licensing.
Another thing we're gonna do is during the pandemic, or pandemic, we pushed out a lot of loaner machines or additional machines for. Some continue to use them, some keep them in reserve, which I understand. We're gonna try and collect all of those because those machines we updated, maintained. Licenses paid for. So we have to look at our loaner fleet to make sure we have enough, in the case of a disaster, we could. We have enough to push back out, but it does make sense to have departments or offices have them if they're not using them because in there, they're outdated. It causes other issues. So it just makes sense and some will want to keep them with that.
I just said, good luck collecting those.
But, well, we don't do the license for.
Yeah, that's not working.
They'll stop working. That's why we don't want to do that.
What is our replacement that are all on laptops like ours up here?
I think her desktop.
So a lot of the loaners we pushed out were passing on here to try and keep a certain amount that were still good or functional for urgency and pushed a lot of those out. Some of media were passed to the line.
Yeah.
And so it's hard to.
Well, that was one of the questions I had. We just had the surplus option of laptops.
Yeah, I mean, for the, for the moment, we're holding on to all of them. We might wipe them so they're not getting up a license and store them, but in, in the case they're needed, we can image them fairly quickly.
Where one computer licenses cost per year?
It's hard to say. I mean, there's, um, multiple licenses. I would say maybe roughly a thousand dollars per computer per year.
Plus or minus depending on.
Plus or minus. Yeah, I mean, it's antivirus, Microsoft licensing, ultimate Microsoft licenses, case licenses. There's a lot of different licenses, just like.
Running the five year shelf life on a twenty five hundred dollar computer here, five hundred dollars a year.
Yeah.
All the computer.
Now, licensed license. So that's why there's no reason you're not. You know, it might be convenient to have both, but it's like, I, I can't use two simultaneously.
Yes.
And is there any way to see as far as usage?
Yeah, we, we have a system that tells us the last time anybody logged into it. And a lot of, a lot of the loaner devices are unplugged and left in a drawer or something. So I.
So why are we paying for licenses for something that, oh, once a year?
Oh, I, I.
All this.
I, I bet.
Give it back to them. Sure. No licenses, I. We can license loaners that. We can license.
That's a private conversation.
One thing that we need to bring to your attention at some point is we don't have a institutional license, license, and it's. It's all by a lot of departments and, um, at some point, we're gonna need to force to look that up. Countywide licenses as opposed to how the department do it. So it's expensive about, we haven't brought that forward yet, but we're, we're looking at it. At some point, we're gonna have to. Cause the, what the Google Bees is part of the Google suite, so we don't pay extra for that.
Right, and all logs and everything are retained by ourselves.
Included system. So it's not, right. So there is.
No.
Any questions, Frank?
Uh, nothing.
Okay.
One thing.
Thank you, sir, and poke your step.
One thing I talked to Commissioner, we're gonna look into fleet management software, it's what the cost is, what they do with. Billings and gives and, um, look into that, create that information to do something. Or. With that discussion, so that I'll.
I've already given, you know, get the color copy.
Well, hi. So we've been right over.
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna happen with you. Um, so, good morning, everybody. I won't take up so much of your time today. I'm still rebounding from the twenty twenty two budget build process. In working to prepare the budget summary report, there's, uh, the goal that I have would be to set up a workshop with you all, um. Fairly soon, early in the year, I think, um, to discuss process improvements as well as awards, objectives and goals throughout the twenty twenty two year. So that that can get memorialized within the, uh, budget summary report. I have sent out a few emails to the budget personnel, um, now that we're wrapping up twenty twenty one. Uh, to pay attention to their budgets and, uh, make sure they get any transfers that they may have or need from me. Sooner or later, I'm planning on the transfers coming before the board on December twenty eighth. I coordinated with payroll. Uh, payroll will be processed on the twenty first. Nicole and I are gonna work closely on that. So that she can get me the reports that would be beneficial to departments, um, that they normally wouldn't see until paychecks come out. But that will give them some hard numbers as to the ways to benefit lines, um, so that they can reevaluate their budgets and give me some information. Because of the holiday, the pack of third day to Lee on the twenty second, so. That's, I've given them a hard deadline of the morning of the twenty second to give me an hour to try and put, put together the practice for Lee, um, as they respect that deadline. So that we can wrap up twenty twenty one and get anything that pays me both or out, both or out. What I can do was, uh, financials for year to date, where we're at as of the seventh. That's something that a lot of the middle is not in there. Um, and. One hundred funds, I, I'd like to know options that are very fluid right now, um, whether the majority of the one hundred funds operated on rural. There are JVs that are still having to happen, um, and some real occasions going on in there. You've seen these seller reports we've worked in this year before, where we're at, trying to, um, twenty one for our revenues coming in. On the second page is, I have listed this paper of revenue that I paced up. What's in those first upper level categories of taxes and whatnot.
The, um, retail sales, uh, so sales tax. Here, uh, this is year to date. Is that through? Does it include December revenue?
December seventh.
December seventh.
Um. The next one would be a, a balance sheet that I've gathered is very similar to, uh, this.
I can.
I didn't.
I tried to put together financials for you all that are similar and consistent with the state auditor's reports as well. Uh, we don't have any graphs on them, but at least you get them earlier. Um, with how the annual report will look. The, the one I wanted to really focus on was the general fund, uh, without, without that two million dollars of. Our monthly moved in there yet and this, this quarter, this like that. We, we are trending at this point to have a little buffer this month balance. So it was a concern that I had. Um, so I just wanted to highlight that so long as you, your departments don't end up. Making ma- major purchases at the end of the year, like that, we're trying to.
We're trying to go, okay, without the, uh, that means.
Very close, with a little bit of a buffer.
With you.
With a little bit of a buffer there. So, um, we won't know until the. I believe the last week of January, exactly where that's gonna end up, because we have an open period in January where accounting still gets processed.
But we're hopeful that. Departments and offices understand it's not losing or losing. Because the funds are there, they may have less funds next year. Trying to. Depending on why you gotta stock up on things.
Maybe relying on adults.
And, and why the baby's unchained, that will haunt us next year. It will, it will. We'll roll it into a, next year is a lower meeting month balance. Gentle reminder to my peers, um, don't pay the lead money for the budget committee if not posted, so I'm not making the accusations. Jen, um, our reading that got calls into, uh.
Excited to actually, right?
I was expecting to see a big bump, uh. Sale of SCS properties being transferred. I don't remember how many parcels over. And it doesn't seem like that really is showing up. Cause I know it started in, in the Q three or Q four, I think, when they started transferring on those parcels. Is there something that she is missing?
Is there something that she missing?
Um, I that need that would be something I could answer for you. He did make mention during the public media at one one point that. The TCA played played a role. At revenue source. And. Location of where the cities were, if I remember right, but that's. Definitely ask great that question. So we'll be able to answer that.
Because yeah, I would have expected to see. Something in Q four should have been an outlier and it's in line with the other quarters, so.
Well, Q four is only showing for the first week of December, so.
But they closed, but it should unless it that's a good question. I don't know. Maybe that revenue doesn't hit, you know, it doesn't get dispersed from the state, doesn't show up in our. Maybe we haven't yet. Maybe we have. Yeah, I don't know. That's what I'm under. Excise tax reset.
So that's right out.
Rick, are you online?
But that would show up in fourth quarter, fourth quarter. I think the fourth quarter numbers.
Anyway, that's the question.
So. Reports continue. One hundred funds are all rolled up together. Like I said, that is very fluid. Capital funds, the next one. One hundred fifty thousand more. And the five hundred would be ERNR, BRNR and CPRC. That one is low to it as well because here in our has a lot of JVs that they.
Good question. Jim.
Thank you.
So collect the bargaining update. They're all in the final. Doing the formatting is the units basically signed off on all of the. The teams in public works. So there's they are scheduled to be turned down on the twenty second. Prevented to do last week. We don't see any issues. Correct the format. If I was making changes. But public work is starting to look prepared. For you to see. So. We're good to go there. So I've contacted. Two of the department, Judge Crowe did an update on their. Staff production, no decision date to date. I'm not in any way, shape or form criticizing Judge Crowe's step is it trying to? Trying to. Fix it. Thursday is the last day for formal notice layoffs. It doesn't matter by Thursday, it doesn't happen. And we're going into twenty twenty one and. I find it frustrating, sad for those employees that run into the holidays not knowing what's gonna happen. We work all year. So again, I'm not criticizing Judge Crowe with his strategy. It's a sad situation. It shouldn't be. And I talked to other judges about the double probation that they're scheduled to be paid. So we're gonna have paid today. Their laws on cheap probation. I do know juvenile judge broke is posting for. Court administrator hopes to have one on the board by the end of the year. See if it will perform for that because my statute has to have. How that all impacts the public.
Just. Has to have one. After.
I think.
Why?
I don't know. That'd be a question for the P A. That'd be a question for the P A. Which is probe, I think. Has to have one and just trying to hire something. So I don't know if we need a midterm by certain date or that. I know statute requires they have one. That's a question.
Well, yeah, but that's definitely.
No, it's a good question. And then the last thing is Jen is. Stay back there. These guys are cool.
Seasonal allergies.
People out. Is it?
Who's?
Nobody wants to jump. It's the hot seat. I owe you.
So what? One thing we. I'm afraid you're gonna ask me to say. The only thing we want to charge to the commission. Is there was discussion during the budget. Workshops about potentially having a different process for filling a vacant. I would spend that out to authorize new positions. It's just. Oh. But I'm worried about another thing with public health. But even it might come up. You know, I've sat back and watched two week budget cycles. Really isn't an opportunity for departments to talk about. What their staff does, or the roles responsibility. That'd be a much bigger discussion. So consequently, when somebody has a vacancy, they come in currently. Casey comes in, we get verbal, they fill it, so. There's really no time throughout the year, either during the budget or filling a vacancy when commissioners. Or the department is could really talk about, are there other options? Can it be job shared? What happens if it's not fair? Are the mandates a part of them? If the mandates aren't done, what's the penalty? You know, because if we if the budget continues to be unsustainable, then other decisions can have to be made. Sometimes having a vacant position is easier decision than. Doing the position that has someone in it. So I'm just trying to find a time. Do you as commissioner fly out of time somewhere in the process? Where there's a more in-depth discussion about filling a position, taking a position. Or is the way we're doing it now working? Want to put something together? We have some suggestions if you want to. And one isn't equally applied in all offices and departments. It's that creative. And and or just becomes more work. Which isn't fair to them either. So I guess we're just bringing it forward, but before we get into that, in terms of the new positions that I have, Jen, to. Hit the grant committee up and writing a change of order that we've talked about in the past that we kind of would like into the budget. In terms of new grant funding positions, that committee. Will be working with the departments to make sure that we have all the information for. Branches presented to you by a department, make sure the department understands all the implications. Sometimes, I mean, I see I've been listening for twelve years. We hired new physicians. We never asked. Sort place for that position, that person wore. That person needed a computer, so does grant. That person need office equipment, and so does grant. We can spend two or three thousand dollars in cell phones, computers licensing. Trying to find a place to set this person that's not covered by the grant. Eat away at any administrative fee that we made it. It's part of that. So I think it's easier to ask those questions upfront than what is presented to you. We have all the information. I think so. The grant committee, I think in terms of anticipated, if we hired new physicians next year, more than likely. And fun, because the money comes with that. Absolute, but. And the public health is actually. Grant funding positions do. So the grant committee will be set up to help those departments. Make sure they understand all of the. Unintended consequences. Brief. Ask. Comments. Questions.
Because for me, looking at next year and looking at the sustainability of the budget we're currently at. For me, the big thing is. If we can't, if it's an unsustainable budget and we're having to use reserve funds to cover it in the future. Don't we already have a policy that there should be a hiring freeze in place?
Yes.
And so so my thinking is, is if if we're looking at next year, the only way we're gonna balance this is, you know, burning through more cash. And is a hiring freeze or or kind of like what you're saying, you have to come in here and show. What the cost is. If we don't hire this position, which is what the costs are. Whether it's production services or whether it's overtime because it's required. That that to me, that's kind of like the place where we're getting really close to being. And so whenever somebody wants to fill a position that's a retiring position. Yeah, if if that's what we're looking at right now, based on what our financial person's saying, what the budget could be, that's.
It's very dangerous for departments and offices. So they don't always know when someone's gonna retire or take a job in another department. So it's kind of random. I think it's not like they. They can do succession planning or. But on the other hand, it's it's seems like the time to have that discussion. We we met, talked a little bit. Prepared in a percentage with what it would look like. We just wanted to see if that's something you're interested in. I mean, Jen and I talked about HBO. I've worked physical questions on positions replaced. Is it they require something?
Ongoing, is it one time? Will it require supplemental as a grant funded? What's the stipulations regarding the position with the grant? Yeah, if you're in a situation of using fund balance where we have been for the majority of all months this year, technically, there is a hiring freeze if that hasn't. So those things being noted on every every essentially the piece of paper that is brought forward so that it's a reminder for everybody to be looking at. Budget as well as a reminder for you guys who are people coming to you every day, every week with a bunch of stuff.
Certification of higher. That just, you know, new position or is that clarification, refilling my reputation?
Exact wording in that.
I believe it means. Any position, right? You know, person A needs the office, there's a vacancy. That's supposed to be, we are basically, we're we're it's consistent with policy in that. That's why everybody has to come in to get authorization because we are basically waiving that revision at this point from position by position. That's why Casey comes in and says, you know, do I have a verbal to go ahead?
I guess I can say I agree with.
That is for all positions as a as it always has been, but I I don't think that we're inconsistent with policy. Because it is, we are, we are authorizing the position to go forward. If we didn't, there would at this point, we couldn't fill it.
Well, it's been kind of a general understanding. Right, that once the budget's approved.
But if you're within that.
You're authorized to spend.
Right.
Refilling a position. More more informal.
Exactly.
And I'm not advocating these questions to examples that I've used in different places in the past, somebody can have to do. Those fit. They had fill it up writing, submit it in. I'm not advocating that at this point. White position become big and. We check changes to the job or all their steps if you look at, see if there's other ways to get the work done. Failure to fill the position for a public safety or compliance issue. Change federal mandates to. Tighten this position for the operational nature of the organization is a position, it could be to have direct impact on your department or other department. Sometimes, you know, some decisions from one department, they have an actual work with other departments. Then they reassign staff. It's the nature of work. This position generate revenue or result in offsetting revenues. So maybe those are the types of questions you have. You can ask as many or few. It could be done in writing ahead of time where you guys, we you basic questions, which you would expect them to answer. And asking, so maybe ways to do it if you want.
My personal opinion. Is yes, come up with a questionnaire. They should have to go through you guys. With that questionnaire, submit the answers to some questionnaire. Sit at the hot seat and answer what questions the support has. There's gonna be some difference because somebody might have an existing position that they've had for four years that we might say no. But there might be another department that has a new hire because it's grant funded or using penal funded or whatever, that it isn't coming out of our bankroll. So, okay. But yeah, I think we need to reevaluate.
Like caution, I would have, because I'm not unsupportive that. Is the. As you said earlier, is that we we. Don't really, I like, I I've been here for fifteen years and I don't have. A clear, like, I'm an expert in every department on their staff and what they do. And so for me to make a judge, you know, so I I you've got to make your case, but I'm gonna have some deference given to the director that knows the department. That knows how it functions, and I'm not gonna step in there and say, oh, let's clearly. You're way overstaffed, and if you move this over here and you move that person there. Problem solved, let's go to lunch. It's like I, you know, if I have directors that I don't feel, I'm not confident in their ability to. They should be doing, they really should be doing this every time there's vacancy, that you should be looking at your department. Is there a way to restructure it, to move things around? I get that they don't, I mean, we all do this where it's the status quo is the easiest thing because it's been working, so let's just go with that. It's it's extra work. So that's the only caution I would have is that I don't, I don't want to cut them out where it's.
Right, and I guess.
And I don't want to do busy work where they're answering all these questions that.
But well, that's kind of my, I guess I would say my point is each director elected, whatever comes in here. They're not only gonna have to fill the current position, but as far as their concern, they need to.
Or, right.
So they're all gonna have answers that, oh, obviously, I have a staff person, person, these four years, we can never plan. But that's the answer. That doesn't necessarily make you.
I think. I think. If we believe in, I believe what I do, that budget's unsustainable. Over a longer year. Balance the budget, but we know that.
Yeah, I want to be cautious about using those terms because the reality is there is not a county budget in the state that's sustainable.
Exactly.
And hasn't been for ten years or fifteen years. So this is nothing new.
No.
It has just been later to us because we. Right, it's affecting us last. Basically, we're the thirty ninth county that is dealing with this. So this isn't some new issue. This is very.
Sustainable meaning that expenses grow faster for revenue in every city as well as every county.
My question. At cities.
So as long as we understand that this is now affecting that front, so that we hopefully get in front of it.
Yes.
Make a lot more tweaks. Then ever.
From the finance side of things. Because we are now affected by the structural gap within the same position as every other county, I think we need to look at our processes and procedures. And change the status quo so that we have checks and balances to be able to manage real time. What's happening with their budget and the financial impact of that. So we don't end up at the end of the year. Oh. Whoops, we have a problem.
Well, my thing.
And I want more, I guess I would say, and I'm hoping that you have more budget oversight because I'm. I'm actually, I will mention this to various people. I'm afraid that, yes, we did come up with budget for twenty twenty two, but in a lot of different departments, we're like, it's. You're gonna start seeing supplementals to pay for payroll because they use the payroll money for something else. In other words, here's the budget you asked for, you can spend over there. And what are you going to do about it? Give me a supplemental or I don't know. So we need to keep an eye on that potential.
Statute, they're not allowed, they're not supposed to be spending the expense before the supplementals.
I guess that, that's something else we talked about. There is no one single tool. So that's a year in potentially thing we watch for, or we're proposing, we're starting at the beginning of the year and throughout the year. So there's no one answer how we, how we manage. But different tools used at different times. But I would tell my peers and electeds and the appointed, what if this could be additional work and have bad levels to fill and build, or all going to have to use the same process. So no advanced processes. We would have to have a regular timer, probably would like to have a regular timer on the agenda so they're not popping in that meetings, early meetings. You know, so we didn't wonder because 10 minutes or 15 minutes. But I also tell my peers is commissioners meet every Tuesday. Rarely does something have to be filled, right? Tuesday. While government does always have to be, they slower, we can't slow some things down. Make sure it's a thoughtful process. Since you meet every Tuesday, many times there'll be a higher decision. And wait it. Get the information together. What is happening, right? So it's a status quo change.
I think it gives us an opportunity to talk to that director and say, hey, how can we, how can we streamline your department? How, you know, technology to get better, where you can work with less staff or take on the projects or, you know.
So I would hope that my peers see this as my duty to give more information to commissioners and it doesn't have to fit their budget process so they don't have to worry. Maybe they don't understand what all the pieces do, how they interact, if they can do that throughout here.
Well, and as to Commissioner Christopher's concern about what we're going to see. Um. Like I don't have any issue with, we need to be very firm that we communicate that it's not, it's, the status quo is we don't. You know, we've always said, I want real numbers that we make real decisions on, not things that you're going to come back six months later and say that you knew that was not going to work. And I, I think we did a pretty good job of trying to root that out of stuff where it's like, you know, you, you butt balanced by removing things that your historical use of that line item was twice as big as that. What's changed? Nothing. That's not, no. I think that is, I mean, we did miss some stuff. We probably did some of it. It's, it's buried. I think we did a pretty good job. The other is that we communicate that it is not short of some unforeseen and unforeseeable is actually, that's more, not unforeseen, unforeseeable. You should have known. Or you're bringing revenue with you to pay for it? The default answer is no. It's just like. Well. And I mean, that it can be that it's like, well, I guess you're salute because honestly, wages and benefits are not unknowable. They are knowable with your current staffing levels, what they're going to be. If you see, you should be monitoring. I shouldn't have to be doing it for you that, wow, it's June, we're six months through. And you've expended eight months worth of wages and benefit. That's not going to work. What? Everybody's taking November and December off. Yay, good. You know, no, you should know it. And we have, and for the most part, people are really good about that. But we've had examples of folks that don't. And then it's like, I'll just go back. It's like, oh, I miscalculated this. I need another $30,000. I need another $80,000. No. The answer is no. I'm sorry. I guess, I guess that's, somebody's taking a month off because there's no more money for that. You should have, and you should have known that it was foreseeable.
Hey, I foresee us having that exactly.
Yeah, well, we may. We were working with our other departments, filling checks and balances. I, we would never want to remove that responsibility to break from a department director.
Now, that is their job.
Right. I see Jen as a checks and balance. I see the auditorial office as a checks and balance, multiple sets of eyes looking to help the departments. Are you seeing this? Are you aware of this place?
The problem is by the time it gets to Jen and or the auditor, it's, we're way down the path.
Yeah, but with her need numbers where you can look at June and see that it's been 67%.
I just want you to notice that, hey, well, Jen's watching.
She's watching everything.
He's anything to answer.
She's hard to read.
Good.
Got the old poker eyes.
And the fam's drying my eyes out right here.
So at least it's not blowing the papers off the desk. So with your understanding of permission, Jen, Casey, and I was gonna look at a process, both for building positions and then the grant committee. Process as well, we'll not work with the league. About maybe say if there's time on the agenda where we didn't have a standing, right? I don't, and then we bring it back to you of course before we do anything, but we're kind of fairly quickly. And it might be good to dovetail with to some degree, we that Jen's going to have the processes, protocols for finance going forward because it's also basically keeping things that are. Okay, though, would you want us to look into and bring back to you?
Yes. I do like the idea of just getting a standing time as far as for HR, where, where it's not just the walk, where there's actually time. So we can actually. Yeah, that's true. Yeah, really. You just have about 29 minutes of standing.
It was 1:05 every day.
Yeah, 1:05. 1:30, they like just like will blubber it.
Oh, no, I'm up at 1:30.
Primetime.
Full attention. And to end our, those are some questions before we conclude. Just like you said, to ask with Casey and Jen and Jeff, I'd like to thank our, the partners of the departments that moved the doors off and out. The U N B G, a big part of that, P A N L in his office, Treasure Gallagher in his office, and Auditoria sorts in their office. We couldn't function, do the things that we need to do without partnership with them. We think it's important that we acknowledge during this time of Thanksgiving and that value, value their, their. I personally want to say a special thanks to Casey and Sandy, Jen, Jeff, Shelby. Joe Curtis. How proud I am. And it's honor of your work. Oops, my report.
Thank you, sir. Poker face.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, is that Jen? That's.
Woo, let's not touch it. Let's see what this is. Rob, is this your, is this your best? No, it is Jeff's, then. Let's see.
That might be worth something.
Yes, we can know all the roads. Third plans for dates.
Break.
Oh. So they didn't cite their contract because they were. So it must have been very, he's talking about that here. Other bitch was saving his radio after all the years. Because they're fearing the risk of poverty of persons. So that's their two, same deal when we start talking about a new reading site. But let's, let's say this, let's pull the remote one down. See if say this works. Maybe we can put the remote with a dispatcher or something. And I don't know.
I think it's our prime.
Yeah, but it's the one that we should be on fire. It's not like, it's not like. Tag one, tag, tag for me.
But that's the. Pressure. So, I don't know. But I mean, yeah, that is, that is good to communicate. Yeah, if you want to be cited. Well, it was. Yeah, that was.
That's for old.
Yeah, that's for old.
Add four percent of here.
Well, we have another site that we have to read up next year.
Updates. I did have, uh, at SWA. Do you, yeah, that's all that, well, guess what? All of this happens through governance board. It has to do all at first. So, uh, you know. Actually, it was, yeah, I was here. I was trying to do it in my office and the jet engine was so much I couldn't, I couldn't hear anything. So I came in here because it is much quieter. That's when they were installing. We do have one. I feel something. I'm not, yeah.
Evidently not. These two know.
Apparently we have one. So, okay. That's what's interesting is it's, you know, it's a five county. Uh, so there's one commissioner from each county. And it's, it's been interesting because we're almost all new to that. This is all, they're either a new commissioner or it's a new assignment. And so the only, uh, Commissioner Maynard from this community county is the chair, is the only. No, that's not true. Dan Conover. But I think he's on his second term. He's on his second term. So, uh, he's new to be the chair. So. So there's lots and lots of questions because we don't really know how things work. And it is, I mean, that agency is, it's all, and then there's all the, well, you see. But we do continue to, I keep pushing on that, there's no reason to build, you know, a reasonable reserve is a reasonable reserve. Program dollars need to be going to programs because we senior services, we can, because that's the dollars that we don't have to replace to backfill. And so you are seeing, some of those are, they're supplemental or additional. A little more funding at the end because there was some left. So, uh, but it's a good, good, we, we asked a couple of questions. Three hours of housing yesterday. We are continuing, we're, uh, the funding gap on the assisted living facility, the newest numbers is about 3.2.
It's interesting. It was less than like four, wasn't it?
It was, it's, it's construction inflation. I will share the, maybe he's going to print me those today sometime. Share the, one is, uh, it's kind of like a prospectus where there is that 3.2 million. We are going, we're going to, uh, uh, going to try to find some private investors that are not, because we don't, you can't pay return. It's just sub. It's four percent. I don't know if there are some people that are like philanthropic. Again, it's not, you're not donating and you'll, you get it back. I think it's a 10 year, 15 year event. To try to, because that's really the only option. 3.296. Philanthropic, well, from multiple. So we do have a list of potential people to reach it, including some things like that, that they are going to approach as far as, but I'll get you the, so you both can take a look at it. So maybe do some, some brainstorming of folks. Uh, because it's the, what the project is as far as the educational piece and as far as the beds and all of the different stuff. And then the other piece is kind of the financial piece. It's about a three page that's the. No, we were, we've never been under two. It was about 2 million. And so with the new. Because we did ask for, I, we want real, it doesn't do any good to try that. Because we all know what's happened with construction inflation. So. Yeah, it should be going up. And there is some, there is some, we actually factored in some. That 3.2 is to, to build up like here, uh, would be within 12 months. So that's basically built in the factor for this year. But then after that, it's just a 15. You're looking at four to six percent inflation on a $19 million budget. Right, you're looking at like 3.5. Right.
Is there?
No, we had, that was the, that was the hope is that we did apply and they were not successful as far as we were hoping for, what's that called? Congressional, congressionally designated directed spending. And, uh, so we did apply with both Congressman Butler's office and both senators. I want to say it's 19 million, but it's in that because it's updated. Well, I was using the word 18 million, but it's, I noticed yesterday it's now 19 million. I won't say 56. I think it's 40 of assisted living and 16 of every year. But it might be 50, it might be 30. I know it's 16 of. I know.
So maybe. But then I was also sitting in the other meeting last, two weeks ago where it was, you know.
Yeah, hell. Yeah, this is cheap. This is cheap. This generates cash. This pays for itself. And about a four percent. So if you know somebody with 3.2 million that is still on.
Looking for, for 4% on 6% inflation.
Yeah.
Better.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion adjourn.
I have a motion to second. To adjourn until 1 o'clock. A hall of favor say, I, I, motion passes. Yeah, well, I.
I printed it into the color copy, so I'll go grab it.
Okay.
For lunch. Here, I'm writing it.
Oh, you're honored. And it's 1 o'clock. All rise. I'll call the meeting to order.
We'll start with our.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, a free God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman, I make motion to approve the business agenda. Business of scheduling public meetings as per since.
No second motion. Can I have a motion to second, adopting the business agenda with the one out on discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion passes. We don't have any meeting minutes at this time to approve, which will move us to citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to, uh, make comment to the board of commissioners on any topic that is not on the agenda later. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We will go back. We have folks on Zoom in chambers. I will start in chambers and choir first if there's anyone that. Here that wishes to make citizen comment. Seeing anybody, I will go online if there's any. Seven, two, one, one, go ahead.
This Greg Wagner was seized. On May twentieth, two thousand and twenty, you held a three hour workshop. With, and Mr. Christopher did not wear a mask in violation of the governor's mandate. You, Mr. Sauter, did not require him to put a mask on. He did not leave the chambers. On September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty one, the citizens were in the chambers and weren't wearing masks. You told them they were violating a governor's mask mandate and you left the chambers and hid in your office. Why did you stay in the May twentieth meeting when Mr. Christopher? Did not have his mask on, but you couldn't stay in the chambers on September fourteenth when the citizens didn't have their mask on. Mr. Christopher stayed in that meeting on the fourteenth for an hour and a half without his mask on and you didn't require him to put it on. Apparently there's different rules for the commissioners. During the September fourteenth meeting, you claimed you adjourned the meeting, but you never put a motion before the board nor was it seconded. Mr. Anderson confirmed this, that you did it improperly. When you left the chambers, you ordered Mrs. Schnell to turn off the recorder in violation of the RCW, that the meetings are supposed to be recorded. Then Mr. Anderson stated the recorder was inadvertently turned off. To more misinformation from the commissioners. He didn't have his facts straight. Something Mr. Anderson claims only the citizens do. Mr. Sauter then returned to the chambers on the September fourteenth and he and Mr. Christopher had a private meeting, not allowing the citizen to be part of it. Violating the RCW Pub, Open Public Meetings Act. Then Mr. Anderson stated to both of you, gentlemen, take your illegal meeting into another room. Which was dumb advice because that would have made the private meeting even more illegal. Mr. Anderson knew it was an illegal meeting in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. You commissioners are allowed to violate the laws and never be prosecuted, but citizens must follow the laws. You must be held accountable for your actions. When will you start, stop violating the Click Attack County zoning ordinance five point one six? And start billing these corporations for their one million dollar projects for county staff time. And you'll make sure that you charge the citizens four thousand dollars when we file an appeal against the same corporations. Thank you.
Assuming that concludes your remarks, Mr. Wagner. Okay, I will come back to the room. Does not hear anybody at this time. I will go back to Zoom if there's anybody that wishes to provide public comment. Unmute yourself, raise your hand, star six if you're on a phone. Oh, go ahead. Terry Boskey.
Yeah, it's good. Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, uh, it's been brought to my intention that Avangrid. Has an issue going on in Maine, the state of Maine. And just by coincidence, I was calling a company. That makes dog coats by all chances that's located in Maine. During my conversation with this lady who makes dog coats, perspex for your dog. I asked her if she knew anything about the energy issue in Maine. And boy, did she ever. And boy, was she really upset about what was going on as a citizen of central South Maine. Where Avangrid has bought the public utilities out there. I'm not going, I have three minutes, so I'm not going to go into all the details. But why I tell you this is because Avangrid is in our county. They have a lawsuit against them right now. Also Iberola, they own them. They're from a different country. If these. Green energy corporations are having legal issues. In other states, and it is your responsibility to do this research about Maine and the lawsuit and what's going on with this company. Because you are to protect us. But I'm informing you that these are the companies where you commissioners are working with right now for wind and solar. And you need to be looking at who you're working with. And I am concerned that Click Attack County could be. At one time sell our public utilities to Avangrid. And so you're being informed that these companies, there's, there's New Mexico. The commissioners just voted them not to buy their public utilities. There is a Rhode Island. There's a lot of corruption going on. And so I feel I have publicly notified you commissioners. Of who these electrical green energy players are. And you are to protect our county from having anything bad. And I. Encourage you to look into what is happening at Maine. Because as this lady told me, as a citizen, whose rates were doubled and Avangrid just. Threaten them to have rolling blackouts for winter because they voted down their project that they were doing illegally. She said, stop them, stop them now. Do not let them take over your county. So that is a real conversation I had by chance with a real citizen of Maine. That is really being negatively affect affected in their energy world right now. And I encourage you to look into who these players are and the harm they can do to Click Attack County. Thank you.
We are still in citizen comment period. I will go online if there's anybody that wishes to read public comment. This is your opportunity. Star six if you're on a phone. Unmute yourself. Be open for citizen comment. Twenty two minutes. Must be. Five, two, five, two.
Hello, Ryan Moe here. Hey, a quick question for you guys about the auctioning off of the economic development building. From what I understand, it was auctioned off for about twelve thousand dollars. I'm just curious as to what the total county loss was on that.
Oh, the, and if you're referring to the, so you're referring to the, um. Annex as far as economic development, natural resource building.
I, yeah, that, that, that's the building I'm talking about. And also, um, calling in, it seems like ever since you guys moved into the. Um, new building, the sound quality is terrible. Is there any addressing that?
This Commissioner Christopher Iken addressed the sound. Talked to IT this morning. The company providing our new mics, since these mics don't work very well. Uh, hopes to have it, uh, having around the Christmas. But with delays in shipping of everything out there. We'll just stick to saying we hope to have it like Christmas.
Okay, I'm having a really hard time hearing you guys. I think what you said, Dan, was, um. Hopefully look for an improvement on the first of the year.
Yes, that, I think that's accurate. As to the, uh, economic development building, your, your question was how much was the loss to the county? There was no loss, so that's.
Yeah.
As far as the, the structure was scheduled to be, was to be moved. At a, a pretty significant cost. To the fairgrounds, the board, the, the actual that was going to be used as a, uh, office for the, uh, fair board. Uh, they declined that offer. And so we actually are now netting the eleven thousand dollars. Uh, which actually we had budgeted close to, I think, two hundred thousand dollars of additional expense to. Move the building, build a new foundation, reset it back up again. And so I would argue that we're, um. You know, we're to the plus eleven thousand dollars instead of being to the negative two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, I got a, I got a quote on that building for fifty thousand dollars on the move by the time you jack up the power lines on, and that stuff. So. The fifty thousand and the two hundred thousand seem like they're a little ways apart. I hate to see the county take that kind of a loss. On a newer building, just to acquire another ten parking spots, if that's what it's for, but. Anyway, thank you commissioners for your time. I appreciate it. Over.
Thank you. Hey, we are still in citizen comment. Well, asking the room again. Not seeing any. Uh, takers online. If there's anybody that wishes to provide public comment, this is your opportunity. Unmute yourself. Raise your hand, star six if you're on a phone. If somebody changes their mind, please get our attention. Although I did have a, I would speculate, I don't know for a fact. I would imagine there would be a significant public process to bring public utility to divest itself of the. Of its asset, since it belongs to the people. Again, that's unspeculating. As opposed to a private utility. Same. Working with.
Uh, commissioners, I, I have to admit.
All right, sorry. I'm not going to tolerate as far as it is citizen comment. You've used your three minutes. I'm seeing, this is not, it is not a conversation. I was just having a talk, ma'am.
I'm trying to inform you that it's.
Ma'am, ma'am, it is.
I can't hear you. And I don't know how to participate in a public meeting when you're in. In, I can't understand what you're saying. So it's not very open to the public when we can't understand what you're saying. You were just talking about a public building. I know gavel.
My God, you're going to hear me.
Who is not.
Please contain yourself. And I will try to contain, I will, would you please just mute her? And I will try to address. We have addressed this before. We understand the sound quality is not good in here. We are addressing that issue. I will remind folks for the record, we are actually not required, there is no RCW that was referred to earlier, that we must. Broadcast these meetings. They are open to the public. We are doing this. We want to do that, but that is not a requirement. That we are failing right now. We are doing our best and we will make sure. With the technology that people can hear. But we're not required to do that. And so don't quote RCW to me. There isn't. We are meeting the RCW. We can stop broadcasting now. And we would be within, um, we would be legal for what we're supposed to do for open public meetings. But don't confuse people by making statements like that. So I understand, we want people to be able to hear. We are doing our best. We've explained that on multiple times. I will encourage folks that are either testifying or speaking or my seatmates, that when you're speaking, please raise your voice so that people can. Have a reasonable attempt to hear what we're talking about. We are still in citizen comment. We are at citizen comment. If there's anybody in the room that was. Although I, in the past would be, you know, I don't know.
They tried to use it over there. So I don't know. I was going to pick it up.
It will get quite loud. I'm very frustrated with the, what passes for. Acceptable civil behavior. Three, three, seven, six. Three, three, seven, six. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, gentlemen and people. Uh, Dan, Commissioner Christopher, uh. Challenged me the other day to find somebody that, uh, might be interested in the, uh, the annex number one. Uh, to help preserve it and, uh. You know, use the fourteen thousand square feet somehow. I know somebody that does that. In fact, his company just bought a bunch of buildings in Coos Bay, Oregon and re, re, rejuvenated them. One of them being a hotel and some historic buildings down Coos Bay. So there are people out there that do that. So if you guys would be interested, I'm going to try and get a hold of this, this, this person. And maybe introduce him to you and. If you put that building up on surplus, if he could get it cheap enough. He might be interested in coming in here and doing what he's doing with those old buildings in Coos Bay. Surely they're running into some asbestos. In black mold. I can't understand why that annex building wasn't taken better care of over the years. But there are people that renovate old buildings like that. So. You know, we'll talk about it in the future. Hopefully we can get you guys together and. And save a big chunk of downtown Goldendale from the wrecking ball. If you're interested in that, just say yes or no.
Uh, this Commissioner Christopher, I would say that. If, if I can find or somebody can find or if there is a buyer out there. Is interested in that building and, and this is me speaking for myself as a commissioner. Uh, and they're willing to sign a contract that they will fix it up and bring it up to spec and keep it. The way it is and not demolish it into a parking lot. Uh, if that is in the contract, then I am more than happy to, uh, work with them. If this is something like the city did with the old retirement home, where you give it away for a dollar, they demolish it and now they own prime real estate. I'm not interested. So.
I'll tell you what, Dan.
If they're willing to sign the contract, send them our way. We can have a discussion with public works about it.
Yes, absolutely. I will send you the gentleman's, uh, information and we'll take it from there. Yes, absolutely. I will send you the gentleman's information and we'll take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. McKeon.
Okay.
My question with regards to the building is, we were required, according to our building permit, to create so many parking spaces. That fourteen thousand square feet building has a number of parking spaces that we were supposed to be required to create. If that building stays and we are still required and the city still requires us to create the same amount of parking spaces. That could be a large cost to us for buying private property from somewhere else to demolish or create that same number of parking spaces. So that is, that is the question. If the city is willing to release us from the number of parking spaces that we were required to create. That would make a lot more sense, but I don't know where the city council would be at.
Right. And my thinking is, if you can get rid of that building and use the money for that building to buy something else to create a space, that's fine. But again, issue number one is somebody's gotta be willing to buy the building and sign a contract that they're going to fix the building. I'm not worried about parking or anything else until I see that because I don't think that's, that's the hurdle that I don't see happening. So when they contact us with a purchase agreement or a purchase option. Then we'll move forward.
Okay, we are still in citizen comment. If there's anybody that wishes to provide public comment, or this is your opportunity. Please unmute yourself, star six if you're on a phone. Not seeing anybody. Okay, if you change your mind, there's still.
Last test right up. For for that building. And that was old construction numbers, not the construction numbers. So if somebody is willing to sign a contract, if they're gonna invest that into that building, we can have a big discussion.
Mister Chairman, I usually don't try not to respond to things, but when I have directly quoted and stating, please take your illegal meeting into another room. I watched that video multiple times.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I would I would concur that I I don't recall you stating such a thing.
I didn't either. Yes.
Okay, if somebody unmuted.
Yeah, hi, this is Ken McKeon again. The idea was to get the the building put on the the surplus market. So anybody could take a take a shot at it. So that's basically what my my mission is to to get it. And you know, and if nobody wants it, you guys still own it, you can tear it down. What is the problem of taking a month or two and testing the waters?
Mr. McKeon. Yeah, no, I don't. I don't think there is any problem with that. We are not. Like, action on that building is not imminent. And I think, I think we've said before, we're open, but there would be the consideration would be with the city as far as. If, as long as we'd have to know as far as the parking spaces are not or whatnot. I I'm fine. I have said that before. I, if somebody wants to, there's a, if that building can live on and have some productive use, but does not create liability for the county, I'm I'm good with that. I don't like seeing things torn down, but.
Yeah, yeah, you're you're into construction. You know, you know the the quality of the workmanship in that building and so. And hopefully, there will be somebody else interested in it. If not, it'll be history. But anyway, that's all I had to say and have a great day and thank you for all the good work you did.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McKeon. That does that does exhaust your free minutes. Thank you. Okay, we are still in citizen comment. If there is someone that wishes to provide comment, this is your opportunity. If you just joined us. It's fine if it's somebody. Oh, your key card wouldn't work? Nope.
Might as well walk it, but it wouldn't unlock. Play with it, play with it. Well, actually, it's.
Dogs has been, I can't enter the front door either. You're supposed to get us a office. That way, that will unlock. They don't want people, because mistakes that could happen, someone might come in, use their key and accidentally unlock our room. And so that would be locked. Right, that's that's why I think for sure to have an office. Everyone that actually will unlock and keep it unlocked. Lock it back up when you're done. I just want to be able to hit that lock them up when I need to, whatever means they choose.
Do you mean I?
I mean, well, it's actually public works, building grounds.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I would like that, yes.
We can make that.
I said, not respond. Not yet, I'm sending.
Okay, we are still in citizen comment. If there's enough given, folks, one more opportunity. No, no, now we're not. File like that. Just having here with all the senior contracts, it's the, it's also at the end of the year. But in the worst one, well, I guess there's a question, those. Usually the senior services one that adds full contracts are the most complex, you know, they're the most, they're usually fifty or sixty pages. To make a budget amendment of twenty seven dollars. If there is. Terms more than twenty seven dollars to pay. These are, it's more than twenty seven dollars just for. It's the same. Public health, those ones seem to be, they're they're in the forty page. They're not as big and it works its way. Public works, there's. Transportation, those.
I don't know, you can get a crap board thing.
No, or a bridge, as few of pages, so. Millions, it seems like the more money it is. Smaller, smaller the contracts. Okay, there's one minute left in citizen comment. This is. Opportunity, last call. Still not seeing anybody. And it is now one thirty. Citizen comment is period is over. I will move us along. Our next order of business is public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. We have a public meeting to consider final approval of boundary line adjustment twenty twenty one dash oh seven. And short flat SPL twenty twenty one dash fifteen. These are in the, this is in the Houston vicinity. The applicants are Dawn and Heidi Struck. We will start with the brief staff report. Please try to speak up.
I hope I can draw my mask to talk.
Go ahead.
All right, so final approval, this boundary line adjustment, BLA twenty twenty one dash oh seven is a proposal to adjust the boundary between parcels. Oh, four, eleven, two thousand, oh, oh, nine, oh, oh, four, eleven, two thousand sixteen, oh, nine, oh, two, oh, oh. And oh, four, eleven, seventeen, thirteen, oh, three, oh, four. It's also simultaneously done with the short flat number SPL twenty twenty one dash oh four. Which is a proposal to pick four lots from parcel oh, four, seventeen, oh, four, eleven, excuse me, seventeen, fifteen, oh, two, oh, four, oh, oh. In the Houston vicinity. The administrative review of this boundary line adjustment and short flat has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road health and planning departments, including the treasurer's office. All provisions of preliminary approval have been met. And the board finds it's in the public's interest to approve this short flat and boundary line adjustment. Motion needs to be made for adding final approval of BLA twenty twenty one dash oh seven and SPL twenty twenty one dash fifteen. Applicants, Dawn and Heidi Struck.
This is a public meeting, so I'm not required, but I will ask if folks, if there's anybody wishing to provide public testimony on this. Boundary line adjustment, short flat slash short flat. Not seeing anybody, any questions or comments. Oh, there is. All right, Ms. Bowsky, go ahead.
Yes, I I would like to know if this short plot will be making additional properties.
This is not questions, this is comments on the short flat that's included in the agenda packet. Yes.
Well, I I would like our county to take note that we do have a comprehensive plan in the Houston, BZ area. And when you're continuing to, you know, approve sho- short plats and add new homes to the area, I would hope you are taking in the. The comprehen- subcomprehens- comprehensive plan. As you're adding more and more homes to our area, you're fully aware we have a subdivision coming, so. I'm hoping our county commissioners are watching over our area and not allowing too many homes to be built inappropriately as you continue to short plot.
That concludes your your comments.
Yeah, cuz I I figure you'll approve it anyway, but it just seems like with our subdivision and everything else going on out here that. You are taking into consideration the growth and road safety and everything that goes along with these additional homes.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that wishes to provide comment? On this boundary line adjustment, short flat specifically. Not seeing anybody unmute. What's that? Okay, questions or comments? I would just make a comment. I would just reiterate the staff's in their statement that all. The administrative review of the short flat, which does include, among other things, review for consistency with a comprehensive plan. All zoning requirements, all planning requirements, all platting requirements, public health, all things that those have all been signed to others. There is. And and those are have are.
Yes, they have. This proposal meets our zoning ordinance, our short platform.
It's been approved and signed off by.
This is the final.
It has been signed off by office.
Agencies and department.
And it was routed for our review.
Yes. Thank you.
Those on Zoom were paused, so we can talk. So, right, that's why we're not talking.
I would, I would entertain more.
Mister Chairman, make a motion to approve that related adjustment twenty twenty one dash oh seven. In the short plan, SPL twenty twenty one dash fifteen.
Just the.
The Houston vicinity, applicants, Dawn, Heidi Struck.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to grant final approval to a battery line adjustment in the short. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Round. Our next order is consent agenda. So we can get the, okay, you wanna come on discussion first? Yeah, no, no, go ahead.
Since we don't remember, I, I, sorry, DT, the West District Court Audiovisual. Don't have necessarily a problem with the audio visual other than it's not much. They're gonna be asking or hoping to receive grant funding, but obviously we don't. So kind of, I mean, kind of. Goes into what we were planning on doing.
Is. Budget, you know, where was the funding, was it from the?
You need some more fence?
I need the not super ultra fine weight.
Yeah, I understand the the safety need that they want better.
I want one of these.
He's gonna steal that like he stole my highlighter. It's faded.
We have two signatures. Go ahead. But the records show I am returning.
This is extra five point.
I wonder what's.
I'll give you a selection.
I don't think it's, anyway.
So anyway, back to the topic. I hate people throwing items in the agenda that we don't have budgeted it, we don't know if they're gonna be budgeted it, it just gets approved if I make a signature or something. So I'd like to know where we're coming with it. Say, hey, if you're like, great, if you don't come back. Knowing that if they don't get it, then we're okay with using whatever COVID funds. Or whatever we do or we dispatch. It's great, doesn't it? Everyone.
My, yeah, that was my question. Is this, is this a typical scene of the year? My, yeah, that was my question. Is this, is this a typical, see, end of the year, they have some money left in their account to try to spend it?
I didn't. The money's in their budget and it's, it's sure not. They don't have a lot. I looked at their 2222 budget. Would I personally like to see somebody throw that number at me during the budget? So no, I don't think it's coming out of their 2021. I don't see the duration for it. It's either crap or on a supplemental. It is a smaller number, but I'm sure it's just in the first.
Well, my suggestion is the, if we are unsure, the whole kind of premise of consent is that it's non-fundary, we've already discussed. We know it's, it's housekeeping. Usually it is. This obviously is not, and so I would suggest that we just pull it for further discussion and give the.
We're gonna be here in the south.
We're gonna be here in the south, and it can go back on next week's. If it's like, we are reminded of the discussion of before, where it's like, remember I talked about this, blah, blah, blah.
I went back and looked at the official, we sent out the COVID request of 2021.
So I had, obviously, inaccurately assumed it was being funded from the courthouse, the, or the courtroom. There's dollars, there's grand dollars every year that gets put in, funded. And then they use it for court, courtroom fund, but it's, that's not, but this is.
Didn't know that at this.
Yeah, so, and it's at the judge's discretion what they fund that. So whether this would even be eligible, I would pull 18. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with 23 items noting that. Do you have a motion in a second to prove the consent, pulling item number 18 for further consideration? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Whoever wants to get this.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the pay estimate to Thompson Brothers Excavating in the total amount of $99,360.80, which does have retainage for the countywide guided post and signing projects, CRP 361.
Do you have a motion in a second? For pay estimate number one to Thompson Brothers Excavating? Oh, I think. Yeah, there was, well, anyway, okay.
Yeah, that's final.
The bill to, is that the final? I thought it was. No, I thought, no, it's here. Okay.
That's from Washington Asphalt.
Number two, so that really is pay estimate. Uh, anyway, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to pay the estimate to Central Washington Asphalt, the total amount of $19,875, which does not, uh, retainage for the West Garland Drive Overlay, CRP 361, federal paid number, STPR-K201, colon, 001, contract number TACE-7080.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, second for the payment to Central Washington Asphalt. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to release retainage to James Dean Construction, the final amount of $3,624.20 for the Roosevelt Grade Road Drainage Upgrade Project.
Do you have a motion in a second for the release of retainage to James Dean Construction? This is for the Roosevelt Grade Road Drainage Upgrade Project. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the county's payable warrants of the amount of $343,396.86 and the payroll benefit warrants of the amount of $764,693.87, but the date ending December 13th, 2021.
Second motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to pay the bills. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. We got a few minutes. Alright. We're running a little bit ahead, so we're gonna, we have a stack of things to sign. I don't know if I see Judge Baker yet. We know, we know how valuable the court's time is, so.
Actually, I've got all.
Yeah.
Too cold to call, so. Never too cold to call, sir.
Okay, I was getting.
As a matter of fact, when it's really, really cold and really, really frozen, your ball bounces far.
That's, that's true.
It doesn't plug.
Get them out of order.
Just need to remember.
Lots going on.
Gentlemen, this is Rebecca Cranston over at the prosecuting attorney's office. Do you have a quick minute?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to bring to your attention, I think there have been some questions raised regarding, uh, purchasing of non-public work services and the dollar threshold with, that we can pursue without bidding. And so we've looked into this issue and the statute allows up to $10,000 purchase with, um, an order by the commissioners allowing such. Per review, it looks like we currently have a $2,500 limit, and so at this point, I think the proposal would be to, um, put forward a resolution that allows up to $10,000 purchases, um, without bidding, um, for these types of services. And again, this is non-public work services.
So anything over the 10,000 threshold would have to go out or bid. What about professional services as far as like RFP? I guess RMI, RFQ.
I think IT's different, too.
And IT or separate, software is different as well.
There is, um, an exception for software, um, and IT that allows you to get around this requirement. I believe that's up to $50,000. I did provide Renee with that statute because I know she's looking at, um, acquiring software. It still, um, requires certain criteria be met, um, but it would, um, give her more discretion in the purchase of that software. This would be, um, up to $10,000. And then the statute between 10,000 and 50,000, I believe it allows a vendor list or bidding. And the, um, previous resolution entered does cover that. So really, our concern at this point is that um, we can go up to $10,000 without, um, bidding for these kinds of services. But right now, we're limited technically to that $2,500 threshold because that's the latest resolution and that was done in 2006.
Right. Hey, any questions?
Does, does our resolution in 2006 have anything to bear on the software purchasing as well? Did that include it or is the software purchasing a state RCW?
The software purchasing is a state RCW. I'm not sure when it was enacted, but, um, it was intended to allow that flexibility, um, given how, I guess, specialized software and technology is so that someone trying to purchase software is not limited just to the lowest bidder that they can actually look at the services offered. So we would not need to build that into the resolution to be able to use that.
Hey, thank you. Right, we will. Judge Baker, have you joined us yet? I'm not seeing you on the Zoom.
He's gonna be here in person.
Oh, he's gonna be here in person?
I saw him leave the courthouse.
Oh, okay. Oh, even better. That's, that would certainly.
Okay to tell a judge to run or is that bad to tell a judge? I think he was at a full run.
Even just because you can, doesn't mean you shouldn't.
I would drive.
Yeah, yeah, I would. Okay, our next, uh, agenda items discussion related to adult probation departments with East District and West District, important judges. I come forward. I would ask you, like I see Larry is here as well, wherever you wanna be, that room is your discretion. Um, I would ask the judges, we are having, it's difficult for folks online. We're still having some sound issues. So when you're, if you can just try to use a raised voice.
Alright. We don't, we're not used to that.
No, I'm sure. So, welcome. We'll kick that off as far as whoever wants to go first.
Alright, well, as you know, with Parker retiring, we're gonna need to fill this position. I thought what we do have, what disinformation now, but we do have to be aligned that we can be from the current department that we could like move up in that position and then just fill her position. Let me answer the question I had earlier without, cuz I'm like, I wonder if they can wait six months or till she meets her degree or. Well, we're hoping we can do that. Or you can just post the job and not find. We could, or maybe a fighter.
Right. I would say I, I, I think I'm, I'm not speculating. I think the board is comfortable and you are comfortable with that question.
Yeah, we wanna make sure that we're doing it consistent with the hiring requirements in the county, obviously, but we think that there'd be ways to make it so that we could take a, a very valuable employee and put them in that position. I think she's on the track to get that credential that would make her, you know, a full-fledged person. Maybe that we can appoint her as an interim. So again, if we needed to open it up, we could appoint it as an interim until the degree was in place and then open it up. Yeah.
This might be a question for Larry. Would there be a budget impact? By promoting her up, you're probably gonna raise a different pay.
Yeah, she'll.
And replacing her, you may start somebody at a lower step potentially, so to anticipate, potentially all within the budget?
Yeah, and it's hard to know what the numbers are gonna be, but, um, I think that, you know, our, uh, Mr. Parker was doing this at a tremendous savings because he was just getting a stipend essentially to be in that position, given his long tenure with the department. So he could do that. That's not gonna work for this employee. She would need to be in that position. But it's not that the position would be something that would start at the level that consider, I mean, be brand new, cheap provision.
But in effect, we'd be adding staff, right? Because there's a thousand dollar stipend now. You'd be filling that to a full-time salary, backfilling her position. So you're you're adding an FTE to the, to that department, are you not? Right?
We're, we're maybe returning an FTE to that department that we, you know, when we decided to share Mr. Parker with Juvenile.
So the difference in the stipend and whatever that full.
May not fill, may not fill at all.
Definitely won't, probably won't, probably. Most likely. Which could result in a supplemental potentially. Um, I think it's important. Just adopted. We've gotta stay budget allocation for that department. And so I think there should, we need to have some analysis based on what the plan is. Certainly, you gotta fill that position as far as there's somebody in there. But what that means as far as the rest of the department, I don't know as far as what the structure of that would be. My suspicion is the current structure with doing that, there is not a budget allocation to make that happen. At this point, that was not, let's just be honest with each other. It won't work, uh, the way it is without some, that's a change. And I think that has to be, I think the board's been reaffirmed about that's. We're, we're not just gonna have a supplemental dollars. So we have to look at the rest of the structure of the department if necessary. So my suggestion would be to work with HR and come up with that so we actually know what or what the structure would be to work within the dollars allocated to the, to the.
And I know what those dollars are, but I can pretty much guarantee you they're not gonna be within the parameters that allowed Larry Barker to be in that position or whatever that was.
Right.
Right, they can save the, the, thousands and thousands of dollars for some, there's just no way we can. But we can do that. I hope we're not gonna be penalized because he, uh, decided to, to do it that way and save the money that he got. Yes, the H.R. probation department, because of that savings of ten dollars. Part of our problem with that is, again, along the lines of no good deed goes unpunished. We, uh, not we, but the program was to pay a stipend for Mr. Barker to do that job. Now that's ended. At the time we did that, we anticipated that. You all weren't here. You were. We said there's gonna be, you know, we need to know that when this goes back, there's one person that we know who could do both of these jobs, juvenile and adult probation. We're not anticipating that we're gonna find another Larry Barker who can do that. We did that because he had that longevity involved with partners, was able to step in and do that. You mentioned at the time, when this gets undone, we're gonna have to go back to what we have. We're there. And we're also in a situation with regards to adult probation where we're asking them to do more. They're at a point where they're doing more for what we ask them to do for a couple of reasons. One, uh, cash bail is being looked at very dimly statewide, nationally as well. When people are not in custody, we wanna have them controlled for safety purposes. We're asking then the probation officers to oversee those people. Two, we're on the precipice now of taking possession, possession of narcotics from a felony to a misdemeanor. As that rolls out over the next few years, we're gonna be asking those adult probation people to do even more. So, uh, we wanna make sure that we're fully staffed to be able to do that. We understand what you're saying, but you have to understand from our perspective, we don't wanna be in a situation where we're looking at this and saying, okay, well, we can't put that person on, on pre-trial monitoring cuz we don't have the resources, so we're just gonna let them fly out of the community without that supervision. It's a public safety issue. We need to have that. Or the other option is to set a veil that they normally can't make and then they're made a veil and there's a possibility that. We have tools at our disposal now that we didn't have years ago, one of which is a 24/7 alcohol monitoring program that we have. That requires that the probation department be checking on that. Those people are then taking a cell phone device, breathing into it five or six times a day to making sure that they're not using alcohol, not prescribed drugs or marijuana. Very effective program for us, uh, allows people to not have their whole life. Allows people to not have their whole life upset because of their bad mistakes, but also keeps the community safe at the same time. It saves us from housing people in the jail that we don't need to house there. Again, lots of reasons why we want to be fully staffed on this position. Not unlike every other person or every other department that comes before you says the same thing, but. We feel pretty strongly that these are important positions and we need to have fully staffed.
Again, I will renew my, I would work with HR.
For sure.
Sometimes somebody's gotta be the bad guy, there is a budget allocation that is in there right now, that is the allocation. It would take a change to change that allocation. That is a proactive thing that has to happen, so.
Take use of reserve funds.
What would you like from us?
Well, first thing, I think we need to understa, I mean, I think as far as for what, for what I mean, I can't speak for the board. Is I want to see the, the current structure with what you're suggesting, what that looks like. Versus that hopefully they would also work with you with, here's the budget allocation you have, here's what you, and then. What could you do with the allocation based on what you want to do? How, how far can you get there?
There's two options, let's hear what they both look like right now.
Well, and I think your, the good point is, we don't really know, we're talking dollars and cents until we do the math, but I, I, I think it's probably a good bet that we're. We're not gonna have a surplus here, maybe.
No, I think that's a reasonable assumption. If there was, then we made a mistake.
And we wouldn't tell you, but you tell, we come for it, but in any event, we, we will, we'll do that so we know where we're at.
I think that's the first step.
Yeah.
Like me work with all the judges?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah, sure, we'll do it.
I know Casey's listening, so we'll get you some information and start to dive.
Yeah, I'll just figure out what those numbers are.
All right.
But I think any other.
That wants to be. Don't think that this is just you guys, everybody.
No, we, we, we understand that a hundred percent. Hopefully, we're, we'll remember, we have the muscle memory in our bones to be able to make a good case. If we don't, then, you know, maybe we ought to be looking at our own job. But we will be next year.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, absolutely. We've got the, the, the dream team is here. Do you want to introduce yourself, however you want to do that?
Will and Josh.
I would come, yeah, come forward if you all want to come, and I will remind, you may not have been in the room at the time, are, you are still. Dealing with some sound issues in this room, so I just ask you when you're talking to, speak with a loud voice so folks online can hear you.
Awesome.
Yeah, appreciate the time today, commissioners, I wanted to introduce, like you said, the dream team, we're finally fully staffed. Everybody knows Steve Gilmore. And so he's, he's kind of the, the old timer with all of the turnover. We have Isaiah Payne.
Kind of said something.
He's all timer in a multiple two ways. Uh, Isaiah Payne, he is our new municipal marketing manager over in Spokane on the eastern side of Washington. So he's taking over Matthew Peterson's role.
Right, Matthew briefed me on you, so that's.
And then we have.
This is probably not true.
Uh, and then we have Pinky Vargas, uh, who is taking over Wendy Wickers', uh, position from. What would you say Everett up to the B C market, uh, so obviously all three of these folks. Uh, are responsible for bringing us tons, uh, here at the Roosevelt landfill. Uh, so I just wanted to give them two or three minutes to introduce themselves, kind of background, um, and then I think we'll be, I think we'll be quick.
Okay.
I'll go first, uh, yeah, Isaiah Payne, so I, I've been in Spokane area for just over 11 years, know the area pretty well. I got to know Matthew Pearson, uh, early on in that time, uh, and most recently was with the Spokane Home Builders Association, so. Uh, not just Spokane, we kind of 750 members, northeast Washington, working on housing policy. Uh, and so I got the opportunity now to, to join the great team that's here with Republic and, and cover a little bit larger territory. Uh, but excited to, to learn, it's been two weeks now, and so we're really excited to continue to learn. Uh, and, and get to know you folks as well, and, and see what we can do to, uh, continue improving and take care of our customers, so excited to do that.
Great.
Good afternoon, commissioners, I'm Pinky Vargas, I've worn two hats for the last couple of years. I spent about 15 years working for the utilities, huge sound energy, cascade natural gas, worked with a lot of major customers and a lot of energy efficiency. Um, and I also have been a Philly Council City Council member for the last eight years. Uh, so, and we have a budget of about $600 million. And, and last night was my very last city council meeting, so I won't be doing what you were doing anymore.
Six hundred, that's what they said. I feel poor.
Well, population, big problems. But, uh, so, um, yeah, so I'm really excited because we, I'm starting something new and get to be with Republic and. Quite fascinated to come and see our landfill and work with your county and see what we can do here, so.
Start talking trash.
Yeah. We call it trash talking, so.
What's your favorite color?
Such pressure. Nice to meet you.
Thank you very nice to be, for both of you.
Do you guys have any questions? I mean, this was kind of a speaker.
So I'd just be curious, I know I had a chance to visit with Matthew when he was at the Wasack convention, I did, I did talk to Wendy, but I was not, I was not aware that. She's moved on.
So Wendy and Matthew are still both with the company, uh, Matthew moved to Texas and Wendy moved.
That makes a difference, but it's.
We, we like, we like to see, see people progress and move on in their career, and we're happy they're still with us, um, but I th, I've got confidence in these two that they'll, they'll. She's in Seattle or Bellevue at our, at our hauling division, so she was in the post collection side, now she's on the hauling side, uh, with Republic up in Bellevue.
Welcome, I look forward to building relationships with you, we have kind of a, at least, I think, a unique, uh, relationship. You know, public-private partnership in, in, you know, between Clickittap County and Republic Services, because it's, it's actually in both of our interests, uh, that you do well. So I think we. I think we have a little different. Rule and relationship that is typical in a solid waste department in a county, uh, that, you know, especially with a host county, so there's. So anyway, we always try to remember to stay in our lane, uh, when it comes, and I hope, I, not I hope, I know. We will build a relationship where you can tell us when we need to stay in our, as your predecessors did, from time to time, and do from time to time.
Usually it's me here.
Yeah. So that's, it is, it's a, it is a great partnership, it's a, you know, 25 plus year partnership. It's really stood the test of time, and I think it's been. It has been a game changer in Clickittap County, and I, I would hope it's been a game changer for, uh, solid waste disposal in Washington State too.
It's a great example.
Yeah, it really, and it's, and it's, I don't know that I would say it's unique, it's, although I don't think anybody does it quite the way we do it. And so it is a great example of what makes, you can. Do this in a way that's, it, uh, works for both parties, and it's, you know, really is, you know, from our perspective, it's serving the interest of our citizens. Uh, you're serving your, your customers, and those interests are actually aligned with each other, and so that's, that's fairly unique. Especially these days, we need an example of things that are working when it comes to institutions. If you had been here at one o'clock, you would see some examples of institutions that are stressed a little bit. I consider myself an institution. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Really? We're gonna get out of here with that, yeah. We're gonna get out of here with Steve not saying anything. Right, I would rock with that.
We had lunch before this.
Oh, he's, he's top.
Oh, no, not here.
Again. Well, yeah, be good, all right. Any more tons is, is welcome.
We're trying.
Good.
That's what we like to hear.
The chairman.
Yes.
I did talk to one of the gentlemen coming in for the next presentation, and they were gonna be here early.
Okay, so we'll see. No, that's, we got new stuff. It's fine. We got stuff, I asked, oh, the piece of that stuff. No, I haven't done any. Oops, sorry, no, that's. Okay, no, that's intimidating, I just want. You get so few.
A little intimidating.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, earlier I.
You're good.
Just a spectator, just a spectator, that's good, nothing wrong with that.
I was a spectator for a couple of years.
Are you being responsive?
Yes, yes, I appreciate you, I appreciate you.
Oh, I'm just bored.
Well, I wouldn't say that.
I suck at jury notice, so that's, that's, just because it wasn't me. I still.
Here, a notice. That's been a while, that's. Actually Judge Baker knew exactly what mine was the last time, which was a little scary. Which is funny, because I've been a voter for 20 years. And it's weird, it really is just random, but it's not, because there's some people that can call them all the time. There's something in the algorithm that is picking.
This person's responsible.
This person responded to the summons.
Well, last time I went West District, it was like two or three years ago, maybe it was four years. And they were, had been having trouble, nobody was answering the summons. And so to get enough people for a jury, they were sending out like five people, the panel number, well, I happened to be in a. Group of really civically minded people, so 80 people showed up for West District. So I think my jury number was like 74. No, they put us in another room, he gave us some donuts, and then he said, um, what I'm gonna do is I have another. Jur, I have another, that was on Monday, and I have another one on Wednesday, and so you 40 it up, go home, come back on Wednesday. You get the second half of the week and come back. So that's what we did, because they were, we had no place to even put them, because everybody came. They said they were doing like E E, and they would only get like 15 people. So. So I don't know if they changed the.
Yeah, the, the opportunity.
Yeah. I got a donut now.
Oh, that's a killer time, uh, today was the childcare summit on the other side. All the counties and people over there, and pretty much the answers are the exciting. Legislative fixes and funding. They're, they're for the most part tomorrow meeting, that's the exact same, nowhere to go. That South West Marshall Ford Force had a meeting, a whole lot of difference there than. It sounded like they're going to Macon, if they invited it, or invited to go to Macon, but I don't know that that's something we care about.
Yeah, I was gonna ask folks, do you need to, the.
Last year, last year, we did it online.
Right.
Brought that to everybody. I'd say it was a bad deal, but I, it, it wasn't as productive as Wasack was, right?
Oh, no, it was, having the virtual didn't really work.
Right, and that's kind of where I was at, it's like getting to a area, probably get a little bit back, a lot of, the buck's a lot bigger.
It is a lot bigger. Actually, what I was gonna do, where I contemplated it, was I wanted to know what's actually going, what is the format gonna be? Is it gonna be like normal? Or is it gonna be hybrid? Is it gonna be what? Because if it's not normal, I'm not even, I would even think about it. Because it's, it's a fairly big expense, and it's really only worth it if you get the full experience of it. That's in DC, it's always in DC, it's in DC, but it is. I mean, it is a really, it's a great opportunity to see how the legislative process works, the federal legislative process, because you'll spend. About two and a half days, uh, on the hill, going from office to office in the Washington delegation, and you will typically meet with. The member, it's not staff, sometimes it's a staff attending. So that is, if you do get a one-on-one or pre-one-on-one. With that member in, you know, for 15 minutes or 12 minutes, whatever it is.
Right, so first of all, to say they're planning on doing this, this is the first time.
Who?
South West Washington.
Oh.
That's where it was, that's what started the start of the word, was it that meeting? But they were running it, well. But I don't know, they thought it was supposed to be that, mostly normal, but I can't imagine. You're gonna get to go pop from office to office, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
If you're not, it's not, I would be another year.
Yeah, that's just it, you know, you know, resort to hotels, or it's like they're locked down here, in some meeting room, conference, or somewhere about it.
Right.
It's probably better to hang out for here. See what it's back to.
Yeah, I mean, if we had something we were asking. I just like, the value I can see in being there. Trying to go back at you, but.
So I said, it'd be a good learning experience, but if you can't. Get at the doors, you want to get in. You know, accomplish, and see the people you want to see, but. They're going to. Make a presentation. For the case of your. Also, I think, council, but they might just have to go to the council. Come here and sit in the room, watch the display, and then come home, did a, and that's the group that listens to, but without our. What it's doing, what they've got so far.
I had a big meeting yesterday on Hitter Ridge, we got a few numbers. Then came, went way down. Oh, yeah. Leftover, we'll put the. Assisted list. Right now, with the construction start in 2027 and the finish of the bridge construction in 2030. With the escalation costs occurred, inflation, we're looking at just 850. So, the direction I set after that was, well, that's a lot higher than we were expecting. The escalations.
The escalations.
Two hundred when it started till the hundred.
Started. So the big thing there though is now we need to look at, you know, how much we can viable lead fund tolls. Come back and look at, well, do we have a chance of getting this bunch of grants? If not, you have to steal back the bridge. You know, when you're looking at four percent per year in your eight years out, that's a lot of. Twenty dollars a year. Which kind of goes to that discussion. Did very well, Mike.
Mr. Miller?
Good afternoon.
We're running ahead of schedule, so we'll be ready for you. Do you have more coming with you or?
He's, he's in the restroom, he'll be right here. Thanks, Steve.
Is Mylan over here? Okay, because I talked.
Giving up the dollar.
What?
From the dollar.
The dollar it is.
Oh, you know.
Every dollar raises twenty. Bonds twenty. Hey, Mylan.
Oh, oh.
We're running ahead of schedule, so if you, you two are ready.
Are we ready?
Are ready for us? You wanna?
Sure.
I mean, I heard you were born ready, but.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And I will, I will remind you as I have every other presenter, we're still having issues with our sound system here, and so it's, it's difficult for people online to hear. And so when you're, when you're talking, if you can kind of talk loudly.
Okay, okay.
As best you can for folks online.
Some of us, Dave, are getting used to that, can't hear.
Okay. I'll try to talk, I try to talk loud.
You're okay, thank you.
Good.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name, for the record, my name is Mylan Wally. I live here in fifteen hundred South Columbus.
My name, John Miller, and I live in Old City.
Well, we're here again, I think you've seen on the notes that we're here to talk about the potential restroom down at the Stonehenge. And we got a couple of gains, a couple of gains, couple of projects, a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Representative Unamossberger went through, we're pleased that he did that, and so we're just, uh, we got enough money to, to do the project, and the, uh, the, uh, Mary Hill Board or Executive Board has concerns, because they say they don't have the funds to do the maintenance and cleanup. And I guess that's what we're here for today. I think, John, you have some other comments or suggestions on that.
I've talked around, I've got a local rancher who's considering whether they could support that camp all long term. That's not very promising, it's just thinking about it for three weeks. Their idea is, is you could have a camp post, he parked down there with his trailer and give him water and sewer. Spend his time keeping it, keep the location clean, put the flags up every day. Simply as a trade-off for a nice place to camp in.
Yeah, one-of-a-kind park.
So one-of-a-kind.
I would never thought of that.
So, you know, there's all kinds of, on the internet, I can find all kinds of places that, that sponsor camp posts or the, or open, where you can go if you wanna find a place to go live with your camper. Potentially match that up. But we still have some costs, in words, up to two thousand dollars a year for tissue paper and that kind of stuff. Still be a cost. Colleen, she's the candidate, they don't really have the money, but she works for the executive board.
We have a meeting that's coming, right, soon, the executive board, and then, I mean.
Have you seen, I, I should have put this in the back, have you seen?
I haven't seen the pictures, it's all like we had in years was just the numbers.
Yeah, right, right, well, I should have done this before, you know. This is the, also the location to be up there north of the west of the stone building. Right here's the stone building, there's World War II, and we would put it somewhere right there. The water line goes. Well, that's, that's close to the World War II, and then also. Be a good location, we did one of them, but I think, wait, it's up to them, it's up to Mary Hill Board. Kind of tag could be out there. And there's the water.
Right, that sounds a lot more expensive.
Yeah. And that's.
Who, who, your patient was your major payment to this building, you can see there, so you might put it in.
Well, we didn't, actually, we didn't think about the patient or the president. And we didn't think that was gonna be a problem, but. Reason, what, what, how we got started on the restroom, reason there was gonna be a, for the, the, uh, stone building, that we're going to, it's gonna make a coffee shop and have all kinds of other goodies in there, maybe sell some wine, whatever. Well, they didn't pencil out. Before that, they were talking about it, I said, there needs to be a restroom down here. We've got a coffee shop, invite people in, you need a restroom somewhere on the premises. Well, when that didn't work out, that's a, then I said, well, you still need a restroom. Because attendance is really increasing. I think, John, you had the figures on how much more.
Yeah, Colleen told me they, they expect, they project about a hundred people a day on average throughout the seven or eight months of good weather. And then of course, we'll know, there's always visitors all year round. Seven or eight months, we, we envisioned keeping the restroom facility operating. November to April, lock it up.
And so we, you know, first, there are also, I believe, concerns about the insurance, liability insurance, I can understand that. Somebody could come in there, you know, sabotage the place, it would be time-waived after, whenever they wanna put it. There, come in time, but anyway, and if it be for, of course, in winter months, it'd be permanently closed. And so that's, and there was even talk, in meetings that, not with the board, but with the people, veterans, that we put a, a camera on the stone building. And, but that's up to the, to the Mary Hill Board if they wanna do that or not, but that way it's recorded. So if somebody wants to put graffiti on the building or whatever.
Has the Mary Hill Board authorized any funds for this project, ongoing maintenance, that they want any part of it, or they're looking for somebody else to be.
They have ownership, they, they have to have ownership of the facility.
Right.
Because it's their property.
Do they have a yearly funding?
Well, we have not spoken to the board. So the executive board may not agree with what Colleen recommends, so they may see our side of it. Because we think we have a good, good clause, and I, I appreciate Colleen trying to manage money. She's, you know, it's a big place down there, and Stonehenge itself is a big commander of the money. Because it needs to be have all the time. It's massive to be have right now. It was last done about twenty-five years ago. My greed is starting to deteriorate, and pretty soon you gotta put stuff at that, or the world will come down.
How does the Stonehenge, how do they? How does, how does the Stonehenge Board get their funds, its own donations and grants, or do they actually have a taxing authority?
Majority of their money, money comes from donating grants, from donations to people.
There isn't a taxing. Hence to that as a part.
No, they're, they're, that's a non-problem.
They're liable.
I don't know what, but it's like, as far as for folks that visit the museum, I'm assuming they're, they, folks pay a admission fee there.
Yeah, it's a fee to, to.
I've only been there for events that were not, in, in recent, I've been there way back and we paid.
There's a membership fee, and so it's pretty significant, and their donor, donor bank is phenomenal.
Yeah, I've been to their fundraiser, that's why, that was the last time I went, where I was like, yeah, I can't hang with these people.
I think, I don't pay, but I, I think they're operating now. I think their operating yield is in about a one million dollar.
Well, then they'll, John, they'd also get funding, veterans.
They get, they have fifteen wind turbines, so that's a nice package of money that they didn't used to have.
I've seen from your, what you gave us, you're anticipating the, kind of the ongoing daily maintenance, it's about eight thousand, and then the servicing a thousand, two thousand, so really about ten thousand dollars a year. So we pay this, what it would cost to maintain that.
It's contracting, contracting it out to whoever wants.
So, Mary Hill doesn't have somebody who does that kind of stuff every day.
Well, they have a, they have one, one maintenance person, who takes care of the, the guard, the guard of the, of the property, just will the toll and maintenance. He said he just doesn't have time to put out the Stonehenge. I've spoken also with Mary Hill Parks, and asked, would you be interested in picking this up? And they said, they thought about it and said, no. They almost, you know, they, they do the same thing down at their park. So I think ideally is somehow get this ten thousand dollars, knowing we can plug it back in every year for eight or ten years, might be the, what it takes to get this project going here. Ten years, it'll cost as much as the.
And so you're figuring in about ten years, the cost of maintenance will cover around the same cost of the building.
Well, I think, I think, I say ten years. I mean, that's a reasonable commitment, thirty-five years is a lot, that's, I was just, I just said ten years, maybe that's enough to sell the project.
So, that stone building, was that built with grand dollars or the idea of both the cafe or?
Stonehenge.
No, no, the, the building that's sitting right next to you.
I have no clue, it was built a long time ago. Early nineteen hundreds. It's not being, not being used. At one time, ten years ago, we used it every summer for a gift shop. And then, when the observatory was under construction, they operated down there.
Yeah. That was the last time I was hitting there. Observatory was shut down, they had stuff going on down there. We met down there a few times.
Yeah, yeah, that's good, and that's when the, we got the word from the park rangers, they're saying, hey, there's a lot of people coming down here to the, you know. And so that's kind of where it started, to, we can potentially start something down there in that, in that stone building. But anyway, yeah, it didn't pencil out, and then again, I was saying, so we should have a restroom of some sort down there. A porta potty to me, that looks awful tacky. That's, that's my opinion, something like that down there.
How much, how much could you get a porta potty for?
I think, uh, seem like her, there's two hundred a month. And they bishops would come and take care of it.
It's definitely a lot less. But it's also for, you know, the Stonehenge now is a national, recognized national register, so a porta potty is kind of a happy thing to be affiliated with, I think.
My personal opinion, I, I, I feel that the Mary Hills Board should have had a, some sort of restroom down there a long time ago. I mean, that's, that's my opinion, go down there and this one person who was on our committee said that he was down there volunteering, working, and a lady comes up, they say, do you have a restroom? Do you have a restroom? And who knows how, how many times that's happened.
Well, the issue is, I, I think it's a good, I think there should be a permanent bathroom there, I think that is the, the issue is you need a permanent source of funding for the maintenance operation of the bathroom. I mean, that's really the crux of it, so the capital grant award is great as far as, but that is, the state is really good about coming up with, but not kind of ongoing funding to support, and it's, it's up to the community. Generally speaking, I would, I would encourage the property owner would be the one, they should be providing that, it should be, this really is a responsibility. I would argue it's, it's the Mary Hill folks' responsibility first. Because I'm afraid if you can't, can't identify some kind of permanent source of dollars for the maintenance, I don't like the, you know, one, because you build the thing, if you build it and you only have funding for a year, you don't have a commitment for longer, what happens in year two? And then, now you're kind of stuck, and then you have a, if you close it, don't maintain it, and folks, they'll be, they'll, it'll get vandalized and wasted, the capital investment on the building, so. See, if you can't really have some plan for the ongoing funding, then you shouldn't even build it. I mean, as far as you can say no to state funding, give the money back, or not, don't accept it. Yes, of course.
Mr. Pluer, can you tell me off the top of your head what Mary Hill gets from our logic tax?
Mary Hill received one award, it was a couple of years ago, it was for a project, where they painted, did this big mural, covered the whole Columbia River corridor.
Well, that's right, yeah.
But they don't get.
One-off.
Yeah, that was a one-off, Colleen sits on the advisory board for that, but it was just that one project.
Because that's, that's the only place that I could think of funding and ensuring a ten thousand dollar here. Well, I would say, you know, that's a set dollar, so if you put, you know, ten grand there, you're taking ten grand from the chamber, Robert Peter, pay Paul. You're just taking winners at that point, so.
Well, again, it's unfortunately that the Mary Hill Board, they can't work it in their budget. Well, again, it's unfortunately that the Mary Hill Board, they can't work it in their budget. Uh, my thought would be to at least help them the first offer, help them the first year or two. Then they get to do the budget a little better, because, you know, they probably do their budget maybe a year or two ahead of time or whatever. And at least they would have enough sense, you know, that, okay, we gotta come up with maybe eight or ten thousand or like what John mentioned. Maybe there's somebody down at the park or worker down there, whatever, that, or, or someone who's gonna be camping on the site. Give them a few extra dollars and they would be able to do it.
So you're thinking about having someone camp off the site?
Well, that's the Mary Hill.
That's, that's one of the, the options that I can see. We have volunteer camps, posts all over the America. It's no different than that.
So I like that idea because then you just buy a toll there.
Cleaning supplies.
Yeah, we'd have to supply a few things.
So that has become, you know, thousands of dollars, about ten thousand dollars.
So yeah, I, I guess I'd say I, I like the idea of a restroom down there. On there, I guess.
Washed out.
Washed. Cause I like the camp.
I really do. It's just the ten thousand dollars. It's coming down to those tourism dollars. Ten thousand a year with purple.
Appreciate part of what we're doing is probably expecting that answer, but at least we can say we have been here.
So I guess you don't want to look at a porta body, but then on the other hand, you're thinking about having somebody with a camp trailer there. If you look at the difference between that, I've seen when some people have done like a porta body, find fences, that it doesn't look bad at all. When you're looking at the cost over ten years for a porta body, uh, you're only looking at twenty-four thousand dollars for the entire ten years. They take care of it. Hands off. Versus, you know, when I run the math, it, you know, eight thousand dollars a year plus two, so ten thousand dollars a year for ten years. Not including the capital costs, you're looking at eight thousand plus that. When you only have a hundred people a day, which is a big question I always had, when you guys were talking about setting some sort of standard or, you know, something up down there, you only have a hundred visitors a day. When you start running those numbers, that's, that's really expensive per person to pay. Is there a possi- Is there a possibility, the stone building that's there, it must have a bathroom in it? Is there a way somehow to use that facility in a way, incorporate that something?
A septic will not happen.
And what would happen with this? Oh, it's, this is a.
This is a, a tank.
Tank, a common service. Okay. Could, could you fix the septic on that building?
Probably not. Talking to Dan Bunkel, who probably knows more about the terrain down there. And he said more rocks and more dirt. He says, doesn't, doesn't look possible to expand that. It's very, very small. And you, and you don't have a great field of people going to leave from there.
Not a lot of dirt. And it's all rock, yeah.
It's all rock.
Right, but if you could use your hundred thousand dollars to build, you know, like what everybody else has built on the podcast to use, you know, pressure distributed slow sand system down there on the side of the hill, that might get you, maybe the commissioner's interest in that.
Well, and still, even if you do that, you still don't have.
Still got the operating expenses. The, the problem is the operating expenses. I think our suggestion is go have your discussion with the, the Mary Hill Board.
If they need a smaller number for one year or maybe two year kind of a thing, that we can go through for the discussion. Ten thousand per.
Well, we had to bring that up to you. Your, that's what they were, kind of getting to us, requesting. Uh, yeah, and so, and then, that's, that's stone building, if you make it permanent, if you could make it a permanent. Once you make it a restroom out of it, then that's what it is. Somebody, somebody may potentially want to make.
You have the money for a bathroom. That is the problem.
It's the main.
The main, yeah, right.
And the maintenance, then you might have a tourist attraction that sells gifts, goodies and whatnot out of this stone building.
And can provide the bathroom.
Yeah.
To get the folks to come in.
Bathroom.
Spend money. There's times I'm paying more.
Heck, yeah.
Okay, anyway, it saves time and everything. A lot less time we had, so.
Okay, well.
Keep us informed.
Yeah, keep us informed.
Okay, okay. We'll probably come back, uh, the next, first next year, something like that.
Okay. Let's remind them, we generally like to partner with people. Okay, thank you. So we have water conservancy board is here. Welcome, and I'll remind you if you had not heard that, we do have sound issues, so if you'll talk, try to talk to us.
We're getting some, I'm missing our column.
Yeah, if you want. So you're not, you're not here to say you don't need the ten thousand dollars?
We are here to say we don't need it for that chair.
Next year. Yeah, right, next year.
We just need it put in the book.
I'm sure glad you guys went after it. Yeah.
What we need to do is put it together.
Yeah.
Uh, rooms of water.
Yeah, water, we're conserving water, that's right.
I think, I think that Frank Stevens.
Yes.
We, we try to be real respectful with the taxpayers' money that you guys give to us every year. Try not to waste it. But anyway, as you see, we have a copy of this. Conservancy boards maintain all our activities. Statutes of what you're saying. We've, uh, everybody's been taking training. Uh, I think we might have one or two that need a few more hours to come to.
It's been a training, a challenge. College has historically provided training. With the COVID last couple of years, it's been a little more strong.
I have to remind our contact to ecology that in my construction type person way, that it's their responsibility to provide us training every year. They seem to act like we should be, you know, searching for training. And it's their responsibility to have at least the basic. Hopefully they'll keep up on, they just have new member training and they wouldn't let any old member attend that. Uh, Dave continues to be our brains of the outfit. He's, uh, a staff, he's an alternate, he's treasurer. I'm sure we got a box of hats, but we can find a few more. Keeping us, keeping us pointed right. And with the help of the money that you guys provide, we're able to keep the application fee down to five hundred dollars. So that any, any joke can come in. Do a little jumping on the ecology, wine and alcohol. Uh, we've got, still got a pile of water rights, change applications sitting on the table. We got one hour away and uh, five, what was it? Five brothers, five witches? Was that the twenty twenty or twenty nine? That was a negotiated one.
Yeah, right. Well, they were through there. I mean, most of those, the others are probably not.
What is the typical timeline? Like if somebody, you know, I mean, I know everyone is neat as far as, cause every water right is. You know, typically if somebody's.
I would just think it is range of six months.
Okay. Yeah, no, no COVID, no any of that, just in, in normal times. Wow, that's like light speed.
I worked, I worked on the Lyle application, Tom McDonald. Who, who's from the, our, Rust Belt. And I tried to push that as hard as I could. Started in December. It was, oh, it was a year and several months. And I was pushing it hard.
Say, how many do you do a year on average, over the price of water?
Oh, it depends on the number of applicants. Pre-COVID, you know, it was, it was a couple of three. It'd be, it would be a fairly busy year for the board. With, in twenty nineteen, ecology changed their, threatened to change the application form. And the way they were changing it, they were, before, they don't have many water conservancy boards on the west side, so this came out of the field. And the idea was, well, we'll front load the work so that they thought it'd go out. I've been seeing all this investigation. They put that all the cost on the applicant upfront. And what we found was, the month that that was supposed to come, that new application form was supposed to be effective. We got nine applications. Everyone was trying to be, so we're, and then COVID hit and couldn't go out in the field. Ecology was not in their office. They remotely, yeah, so things were slow down.
One other question I have is it said, uh, budget about five thousand eight hundred, is that what you budgeted in twenty twenty-two? Remember, you have a cut there of a hundred percent or?
That is not my budget.
It used to be twelve thousand and then was it oh eight or something? Uh, everybody tried to take it oh nine, everybody tried to take a ten percent cut. That's how we ended up with the ten A.
What is that money usually spent on training in?
Training, travel.
Travel, travel, uh, and indeed, I'm on a contract with the park.
The percentage, I don't know. It's kind of spinners and lots of fun. Lots of fun, yeah.
And worth every penny of it.
It is.
We, we, it'd be ugly if they wasn't there. Keep that in mind, just the years go by. People are gonna retire.
No.
No, yeah, not today.
Next question, if your members on the. Are you, are you getting new blood? Are you able to replace people that no longer want to serve? I'm assuming that's a very tight.
It, it's challenging. It's, it's quite a commitment while they don't process a lot of water changes.
Kind of like you either have to do it or sell it, so it's good.
I think we have three, we have one opening on there.
Oh, pretty good.
We, we've got one opening. Scott Andrews, he wants to retire. I would like to fire him. But neither one of us are just gonna dump on the board. But yeah, we need to be looking out. Public education. We try to reach out to as many people as we can, but it's tough getting the word out to, either they know about us or they don't. Hasn't changed all the years. Board submits reports to the state auditorium office and the board is not considered an actual. Grabbing public, public notice. Public disclosure. State water law. This water right. Continue to perform site visits, travel if necessary, process applications. Continue to provide full of the site. Our state water, state virtually, as may be appropriate, could fall into conflict with education. Can you review the public legislation? And you can implement public education. The budget request, we spoke about that. Going to use it for twenty twenty-one, but request, uh, you budget it in twenty-two, ten A. And let's see where we're at.
You recall what you, uh, how much of the ten A of this year you used?
We did not create any of it.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I, I just, I think it's important to remember that, that it's, just because it's budgeted. You guys, I, I know multiple times.
Right, right.
And I think I asked that question during the budget. Like, if this is still here, why are, why is the number the same?
Try to be easy on the mind. If we, when we have to do the new member training, that's what gets expensive, because they've got three or four days, hotel, food and travel, wherever that may be. And it's normally a couple thousand. To get us through that training. Any other questions?
Questions?
Perfect.
Go forth and keep doing good work. Get that number good. Start spending that money by getting some, uh, applications up to it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Well, I see the clerk is here. Are you ready to continue our discussion?
I sure am. I sure am. Um, so I heard Rebecca on the phone a little bit earlier. She talked about the RCW. I printed that off you. It does have a green here that it was impacted, but.
Enforced now, so that's.
Yeah, it is. So you'll have that. And so I've done a little bit more research for you from some of the questions that you asked me. The system, OnBase system does do the word recognition. So that is a piece of it that is there. And just to give you some history, because I didn't realize. That they were, I didn't realize we were looking at another system. So OnBase, what I talked about earlier today. Glenn and Sandra had signed, had gotten a contract with OnBase with 25 licenses. And I don't know exactly the status of all those licenses, if they're all like user based. So people who would be scanning documents or whether they're view only licenses. So I think there's some of both. And it took till. October of 2018 for us to get implemented into OnBase because this, it was brand new when they looked at it back in 2012. So we didn't get implemented on base. And prior to that, we were using. A system called Liberty Net, which was from the same company as OnBase. It was, you know, the newer version of the document management system. And so I think that when the contract was done, and I have not been able to handle that contract, but I've tried to get it.
Wouldn't it be great if we got some kind of circle?
Yeah, wouldn't that be great? Because I, you know, I actually did reach out to Jen about this. Probably six months ago, and she found one document, but I think I need a document that was further back, so I haven't found that yet. I know, kind of funny, right?
Like, yeah, that is.
I know. Oh, like, yeah, funny.
If you have a year, your contract was executed. Please report. I can probably find the number for you.
I, I think it was 2012.
Okay, I'll look.
Okay. Um, so. Another thing that was brought up this morning to clarify. So we have a system that the state provides for us called Odyssey. Odyssey manages our cases for Superior Court. So in all the cases that get filed with us run through Odyssey. That is a system that is supposed to be implemented at the district administrative court levels by the state. But there's been some hiccups with that. It's not going very smooth so far. The system is working fine for us, but they've had some other issues that they're dealing with. And the juvenile department doesn't have a case management system. And that is what the program that Larry built was. The program to help them manage their cases. They utilize OnBase for their documents because they have access to OnBase. From the documents that we file in our office.
So are they some of the 25 user license?
Yes, yes. Them, the prosecutor, the jail has them. Yeah, I think the, and Superior Court has them. And so does adult probation. Has it as well. So. Um, so back to you, Jacob, on the ability for us to go paperless. So I was speaking, so Cal Reader is the judge's edition, edition piece of OnBase. And so the reason that you need to have some kind of software. Because judges, when they review the files before court, they put sticky notes on documents that they want to, you know, I mean, we get files are thick. And so they utilize sticky notes so that they can flip to the documents where the information is that they need. And those judge edition type. Documents or software allows them to be able to put sticky note type things in there. And it also. Gives them, so we create our, our calendars for the. For the judge. It includes the cases. So with Cal Reader, it would grab all the documents that are in that file. They would click on the case number and be able to see all the documents that are on file in that case for them to review. And then be able to put whatever sticky notes they need. So, yeah, the county was to go to the, the OnBase administrator. To. Help us with some of our document management needs. And if she was allowed to come on. Now, and my cost is around $12,000. So if we were to use the American relief money. That money, I would go further if we got Nardos as a consultant. She would be able to get me set up with my e-filing. The financial piece of the e-filing that we talked about, that I would have to utilize something different. Is the system that we're already using called Point Pay, which is the system that Greg established for the county two years ago. So that's where the financial piece would go through. So it's not, we already have a system in place to do that. Um, she can also set up, so she was set up by e-filing. She, and so that piece would all be taken care of. She could establish the Cal Reader, I believe, at little to no cost to the county. For the judges to be able to utilize. She would also be able to get my documents, help IT get my documents to the state archives. I don't believe it's a disaster recovery. Place to house your documents, but it would at least allow our documents to be somewhere should there be. You know, a fire in the courthouse and the server gets, gets lost. So those are our three jobs that. That I could get help with as soon as, if we were to go the route of hiring. The OnBase. Have I made it clear? Sometimes I confuse it. So if you have questions, please ask.
So are you no longer saying that you need the job?
Well, I think for the county, it's in the best interest of us to go the other way. I'm just trying to figure out the best plan moving forward for the county business.
It's like the initial ask was for him and soft to realize. You were thinking about expanding OnBase.
And that conversation actually started a while ago. After I visited with you guys, I talked to, I talked to Ron. And he said, well, um, I think that the health department is looking for a system. You know, talk to Aaron. So I did have a conversation with Aaron. I had a conversation with Ron and said, you know, Randy told me before she left post. That she wishes that she could have taken a bigger interest in the document management system. When I brought the people in, it was in April 2017 to present what they had available. She said, because we really do need that. So.
Now you have a question. Is, did your estimate grant that you're not, just not your department? But so if they're, if they're already using it, would this system, as far as the juvenile? We're gonna have to retire their legacy Larry system. With Larry's retirement, they're gonna have to do something. While OnBase is capable of, you know?
No, all it is is documents. What they need is assistance to manage their cases.
They can't use Odyssey. It's only for the courts.
Well, I think what, there was supposed to be a juvenile module built into OnBase or to Odyssey. I'm sorry, I hate it that they supposed to start at the health. So it was supposed to be established by the administrative office of the courts. And apparently that's gotten shoved out there.
That's about two years.
Yeah, so.
What bothers me that I'm gonna have to, you know, if we're, they're gonna have some kind of case management stuff in the interim. And we're gonna go invest money getting something that they're gonna retire potentially in a couple of years with a new.
Well, I just, maybe, you know, maybe the idea of looking at another county and maybe another county has a system. That they have a consultant that maybe we could break down and establish something. You know, I think using your, your resources, you know, within is the best thing to do.
Why, isn't it, why, it'd be a question for Larry. Larry built this. Why can't Larry not train someone? To continue to use their case program? Is it, you know, Microsoft product that you built?
I've never seen it.
You've never seen it? So we've got some questions there. Especially what would have happened if Larry was not around, suddenly. Don't, don't like to hear the sound of it as it is currently. I agree, the best thing to do is ask what other counties do and. Figure out what we can do between our clerk's office and our.
Between the clerks and the clerk.
And the, and the judges towards that, including, you know, both. Juvenile as well as adult probation. And I don't know the sheer.
I think the prosecuting attorney has their own system to manage their cases.
Server and the platform.
And maybe, maybe there are modules within other software that is being utilized already locally that, I mean, if you don't know.
Yeah, we don't know.
You don't know to ask, ask the questions.
I don't know, but I can tell you by looking at OnBase from Highland's website, I definitely don't get any answers.
Well, I had to, I had to do a chat back. And so she sent me an email when I asked about the word recognition. And she sent me a Highland platform capabilities feature. I can forward that email to you guys. You guys can take a look at that. Would that help?
I gotta think we need. Mr. Rob. That great research. I don't know if that's necessarily gonna be dialed in to become an help.
And I don't want to necessarily get sidetracked because that's not your, that's, that's, I was just hoping your thing solved lots of problems.
Well, it might solve a couple.
It might solve a couple. Yeah. Okay, other questions or we wanna?
Oh, I think this is another one.
IT needs to.
As I said, that's why we want a lot of the IT to, to look at. OnBase.
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 OnBase, but what else is out there? Are we going with the best available product or going with one that? Sent a spam email three years ago that somebody said, oh, okay, we'll hire you. There's better without there. I would really like to know. Because I looked at it before, just like Jake said, there wasn't a whole lot on the website. Somewhere. So you charge Joe.
So that is currently what you're.
Yeah, we use, have been.
So you're the system expert as far as what, how, what is your, no, no, not what's.
No.
That's why you wanted to hire.
No, 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 but I'm saying, I'm saying as far as you're the, you're one of the consumers now.
Yes.
As far as, so you have direct experience with, working with how it works.
You see, I guess I would say, just to be frank. One thing that scares me. In its usability or how good its usability is, is do you need a consultant? If I'm operating the thing.
You have to.
Each department is gonna need to hire a consultant to figure out how to use the thing.
That's what one administrator would do. She is a certified OnBase technician. And it is a complicated system that takes, and that's, so ImageSoft is our buffer. And Nardos would be, ImageSoft is the, is the company who gives us our current.
He must be a really special chair. He's pulling it over. I'm sorry.
You should all stand in the.
And.
Looks like a new chair.
And so, um, so Nardos would then be the one who could assist us with these projects. Without going out and getting charged professional services from ImageSoft. Because I, I haven't reached out about the getting my documents to archives. But one of the other clerks was told, like, we can't do that because we, it's, we are gonna have to charge you. For the background stuff that ImageSoft needs to do to get it there. So. The consult, consultant or the administrative, administrator would be that layer. To prevent some of those extra professional services that the county would. Have to pay should we need extra help to facilitate projects. Does that help?
Currently are using it.
ImageSoft and OnBase is the product. ImageSoft is my company that I purchased. That does all of the IT work. Yeah, the support work. I'm just not looking at the words.
So ImageSoft supports OnBase?
Yes, products, yes. And when you have projects you need to do, then you go out for a statement of work. To figure out how much that's gonna cost. And just like when I needed to have an update to my. OnBase. Software. I had to pay an extra four bucks.
I think that's what Jeff was referring to. If we utilize it, we have development charges. We're gonna have to have somebody help us expand the use of that to the individual departments. Whether it be that, ImageSoft or somebody else, you need that expertise to help you do that. Okay, I think I understand that piece. Go back to the other person. Be a Nardo or?
Nardos.
Nardo, who, is that a person?
It's a person, a female person.
So, okay. And so what is their purpose in the scheme of things? So I have, the product is OnBase. ImageSoft. Is the service or the, the support. What does this person, what's this other, Nardos?
She would be the person who would be able to build our server to accommodate. The projects that we're trying to do, such as for me to get my documents to archives. For me to set up the e-filing system. She would be able to do the work that it takes.
That's different than ImageSoft, the services that ImageSoft provides as far as.
Although I can pay, ImageSoft will do it. But she, she would be able to do it as our in-house administrator.
Back since we started this so long ago. What was the dollar asked? Call.
Well, the last quote that I had was 11,000. When all the counties were in there, it was 11,300, I believe. But I don't know if all the counties are still in. Yeah, 11,300, that's why I said 12,000, just because I'm not sure.
So when you say Nardos, that would, she would be our in-house, but we would be sharing her with some other counties?
Yes. Uh, she's actually becoming, going to become an employee in the. Uh she's actually becoming, going to become an employee in the. She lives in Monache.
Any other counties are there?
Um on my list. I have eight. I don't know if they all were across still.
So do you know, would she have others beyond the eight?
No, no, she would just be strictly an employee.
A potter and then through interlocal or some thing that we would share.
And she would be the administrator for on base.
Well, we know she would be for your part of on base, but if we're trying to do this as a county wide, would she be for?
We'd have to pay more.
I've already talked to her, she said yes.
Oh, wow.
That is terrific.
Option. For options. It's a big conscious. And if I'm recalling correctly, and I don't want to, I have Jen's on, but we did. Your initial ask was the use of the apartment dollars.
Yes.
I believe this is eligible, it's an eligible use of the dollars for the. There is currently in the first group, there is a, I think, I don't know Jen's.
No, she's definitely she's.
Yeah, that there is a, there's a un- unallocated balance, so I mean the. The lost revenue that we, that calculation difference of whatever, like fifty-six thousand dollars.
That's the figure she quoted.
Right, I think is unallocated.
I think we applied some of that towards the.
Something in.
Two weeks that the organ, the consultant that we hired for public health department, I think forty-some thousand of that was.
Oh, that's right.
Applied to that fifty-six.
That's right. Although if I'm recalling correctly, we. We allocated, no, you're you're right. We moved two million of lost revenue, but that lost revenue number was slightly more than two million. Right, so there's some. There's there's some other dollars still unallocated.
So if that doesn't happen, then my backup plan for my um is to go the other route to the filing. My recommendation to you guys, because I think the better use of your dollars is to go with.
That's twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand was.
That's what I, it's approximately that.
Right, depending on how many other counties, how many other counties of that.
Shut down.
Well, I think pondering how we spend that. And and I figures are gonna change.
All of these other counties use on base?
Um. Yes. And.
And is there a way we can talk to one of those to see what all they're using on base for? Are they, are they fixing and matching it for their juvenile apartment? Included in it, are they able to file between all these different processes workflows? What does that look like?
Well, let's get raw. IT to check what those other counties.
What they're using on base for.
Our different, our services, different.
We can do that. I I think it may be separate from what we're trying to do.
Right.
Just give one per to.
Jeff has worked with Nardos, I think her name is, she's very good.
I'm, I I will say for me, I'm willing to. Invest. Up to twelve thousand dollars to help the clerk with her issue. We can, if there is more. Things that we can use for understanding that there would be, I'm assuming there would be additional cost. Uh to.
So.
If Nardos, if we're asking this person to be doing all this other stuff, I can't see that she's gonna do it for twelve thousand dollars. That quote is to support you, it's to do what you, your project and projects that are associated.
Saying no.
Okay, that would be great.
This is the second one.
Okay.
So my cost, my cost that I was putting is based on the licenses. So if we have to purchase more licenses, then yes.
Right.
It would be more costly. That would be, that would.
Okay, I, so I'm I'm willing. Try it.
So I.
Is it a one-year contract? So that's what I'm trying to understand.
That's the other piece that I was gonna ask before I came over here and I didn't, to find out how long the contract was.
I assume it was a one-year.
Knows that before I signed up.
I know, I know, but ahead of the things that it was.
Thirty-five year contract.
It fell out when somebody asked me a question.
It's sort of like back to me that's included on this.
So the second year, there may not be art funds available.
Right.
Who are getting another payment that's been set aside for fiscal software. And I don't know how long it'll take Jeff and I, Jeff. To contact these other counties, contact on base and. You know, get the information that we need to bring back to you. I suspect it's gonna be in January because of the holidays, so. I would, I mean, I know, I know pondering needs to know what they're going for with where this is sitting. And I want you to be able to go out and say, we're, we're definitely interested, uh we're definitely looking at doing this. Some of the commissioners have initial questions of what we're actually gonna get out of Nardos, what that contract's gonna look like, how many hours that is. A year, what that, what that truly entails, because apparently we've got an issue between multiple apartments and our software systems. And we want to move in a linear logical way to ensure that we have the best available software that will do the job for you.
I have one clarification question. The original start to this was so that you could do electronic filing. You're gonna be charging people to do electronic filing.
I am.
And this is.
Still going to do that.
This is still gonna help you get there and you're gonna be able to make five grand a year, seven grand a year, what you said that number was. So yes, I think there's gonna be some kind of ongoing expense, but there's gonna be at least some offset.
Correct. Thanks for bringing that up, because I did have that.
Fine.
So you need to have. Um so.
I think it's fine.
Jacob, you need to have the contract, how long the contract is for, right?
Yeah.
And then you want to know how many hours she's assigned, that she would be assigned to our.
What's that a large thousand though, I should guess.
Okay.
And then, you know, like anything, if I was, if I was to go out and ask for our EOM scope report, then you know what you think you need in your department. And then how that's gonna interface with great software that actually they're gonna pay through, right? They're gonna pay an extra three percent using great software, what you said earlier, remember to pay the fee. Files, file the documents with you, right?
Okay.
The e-filing, you're gonna charge, how are you gonna get the? The fee.
To point pay, is that what you mean?
Okay, so it's not.
This point pay have to integrate with your law?
No.
I didn't think.
No, is that what you're asking? Because I really.
That was part of what you were saying.
That's what I'm trying to understand. This is, so it's one thing to accept the documents, another thing to accept the dollars.
And we do that all the time currently.
Using point.
Yes, yes, we uh do certified documents, um email them out to people. If we have to mail documents, we add another dollar or two to pay for the thickness. And they use the point pay system to pay us, they have a spreadsheet set up so that we can keep track of. Who has called us, asked for what, and whether the job has been done. So.
That's what I'm trying to understand. This is the process workflow and then making sure that it all connects together.
It will.
And it's all on.
It is.
That's, that's the important. Yep, those are, those are my main questions.
Okay. Okay, so the contract years and the hours that we're gonna get.
Cause it will make a difference as far as like we have. We have eligible dollars for one year of funding, but in how you, if the contracts were longer, if we have to, if we had a commit to longer, we need to know that.
Right, I agree.
Maybe we can ask, we can ask Nardos if she's able to assist us in expanding this across our county. What's your capacity? What would the cost be? That's just additional information. She may say, look, eight counties, someone, I got so much time, or I'll do it on the side as a side. Ask her her capacity.
Or only doing the, doing the clerk thing and that's it. I know, I know, I.
I don't.
She's saying, I know, this is three times.
Very helpful.
I don't see, I don't see this Nardos here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, all right, thank you guys for your time. I'll get that out to you soon if I can.
Okay. Uh let's uh somewhat. The treasurer's here, but he he can work from anywhere.
Done.
Uh let's go ahead and do our ad on the new business. We have a. Who should.
No, no, but.
Just notice the record.
Consent agenda, all it is, scheduling these appointments.
Right.
And to be able to get these done before the end of the year, because at the end of the year. Um a lot of the financial system is frozen, so they're not able to take care of what they hate to finish this process. And so the schedule was fairly light and they asked permission to go ahead and do. This many, normally, or in public meetings as these, because they're already gone through all the research and the vetting. Normally they only take five.
Right. No, I mean, I have no issue with adding, because I, it is a problem. We try to be responsive, but it is an issue during that time period. Between January first and about the end of February, at least mid-February, where the system's locked up because you can't, I can't go pay my taxes. And you have to, you have to, everything's gotta be cleared before you can do these, and so we. Get them done ahead of time while everything's so current, then if it means we have seven or eight. Short plats in a single meeting, that that's okay.
Yes.
So, so what action do you need from us to?
Just make a motion to approve these these meetings as presented.
Chairman, I'd make a motion to schedule a public meeting to be held on December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, and rescheduling a public meeting from December twenty-first to December twenty-eighth. That's full of short let, SPO twenty-twenty-two dash, twenty-twenty dash twenty-two. Brightwater Holdings, ELA twenty-twenty-one dash thirteen. And short plaid, SPO twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-six. Jason, Roger, Christian, two thousand. Battery line adjustment, ELA twenty-twenty-one dash sixteen, applicants Dan, Teresa Lester, Allison Peterson. Short plaid, SPO twenty-twenty-one dash four, Thomas Ireland, short plaid, twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-nine, Mark Heatherdew. Battery line adjustment, ELA twenty-twenty-one dash fourteen, applicants, Mark Steel. And uh rescheduling a public uh meeting to consider approval of shoreline substantial development permit, shoreline. CUP. SH twenty-twenty-one dash boat to the Buck Creek Bridge, applicant John Daniels, Tuesday, December twenty-first to December twenty-eight.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to uh schedule those public. Meetings for the twenty-first and then move the one from the twenty-first to the twenty-eighth. Uh all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer Gallagher. You have a question?
Yeah.
Well, I know we had that one, but we had something. Excise tax, oh, you were listening.
I was.
Oh, okay. You must have, you may be not at the end.
Something else, so I was listening, so instead of trying to be up.
Okay.
I've done some work on it.
Um, okay, hello. Uh. Uh first, I'll start with, I'll get to the excise tax thing in a minute. Um but I'll go through the finance committee update from twelve ten. Uh we had a couple of things we talked about. Um that were new. Kind of spent quite a bit of time discussing um two new, kind of sales tax, I guess, in general. Um there was a proposal from Fisher Anderson regarding an airplane tax that had, that uh. Jen had brought in, so we talked about that and trying to kind of understand it. We talked about um renewable energy tax um in regards to. A, how much we're reserving. There are some potential changes to to legislation for the renewable energy tax. So I'll kind of start with the first one. It looks like. Uh I guess. Maybe this is more of a point of discussion. We were trying to understand, was this a legislation on the airplane base that is being through? Somebody proposing this to you now, or how is that early?
So what happened is in the the. Budget bill. From the state. The State Department of Revenue tried to do an end around. In essence, cutting us out of the airplane sales.
So the language in there, is it a budget?
In Island County came over the top and said, no, 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 you can't do this, and I never even thought about that.
Of a vessel.
But they get it, the Island County's the first stop, which is a lot cheaper than King County or wherever, wherever you're in the dock. And so they've been getting all the big yachts.
Yeah. I gathered the vessel part, because I, they love to, the airplanes and the vessels together, so I was like, oh, this is interesting.
Yeah, so, and I never.
I didn't either.
That we had, that we had allies.
Yeah. Hey, at least one ally.
And and.
Thirty-seven to go.
Yeah, until the last moment, it got vetoed out. Someone from Island County, the governor vetoed that. Um but now there is the, so it went from that side to now the policy side. As I understand it, is that the uh they're trying to do rulemaking to create something that's called transient. So in essence, you're just stopping your transient thing.
Right.
And so the state question I have for Jen was, we need to look into this, we need to talk to Ivan County, we need to figure out how to to be a part of this discussion.
Right, and sales tax pieces are, if we, you would get involved as the treasurer's office, so. Sales tax, if you guys have sales tax questions, you're welcome to shoot me an email or whichever. So Jen, out of the meeting, the finance committee meeting, we are going to do some work on trying to dive into what pieces would be in there that we have. Um we, we weren't really sure where this was coming from as to which angle. So is, so when you say the the budget bill, do you happen to know what piece of legislation that was, that was in there that they got?
No, I, I don't, I don't have that, but I mean, that part's over, done.
Yeah, I was just curious to see what happened.
It's set up.
Yeah, but.
It'll come back.
But now it's gonna go through deal.
Now they're trying to go through a rulemaking process.
But on the rulemaking, does that happen through the Department of Revenue, or does that happen through the Senate in the House?
Rulemaking of these, it's our Department of Revenue.
Yeah, that's right. So this is a new organization.
It would let you splash it, maybe the others.
It would do it by agency.
Yep, so they're gonna, yeah, okay. So we kind of talked about that whole piece and trying to kind of figure that out. Um and uh I think today, I think we've only had one or two, and again, I'm going kind of by memory, I want to say it's only been one or two recently. None of which have been huge, huge airplanes in twenty-twenty-one, um which is probably not a shocker because it's not quite the same. But anyway, I will, we we are working on trying to kind of work through this and figure that out. So we had a discussion to kind of. Also just kind of, I think the same, like, oh, there's other people out there that have the other situations. We also kind of speculated and wondered, we wondered if there was some. Issues from other counties that maybe used to be getting the airplanes that were then having, but that that's good to know where that's kind of coming from, so. Uh so we talked about that, so we will continue to work on that, hope that on other agendas as we move forward, keep that as. Whole business. We then talked about renewable energy projects. There was a question that was raised to Jen, which should have been raised to me about how much the um. What what we're, what we're deferred, but not deferring, that's probably not the right term, but how much we're setting aside potentially for the renewable projects. Um and essentially by resolution, that's uh, so it's, we found that in uh fund one forty-seven, but one forty-seven got moved into fund six-two-six. That's where the dollars are going to because the state auditor wanted us to have it in our one hundred funds, it needed to be an agency. In our one hundred funds, it needed to be an agency fund. Um, and in there, it says it's seventy-five percent. Uh, and. We kind of had a further discussion about, you know, that basically these dollars of these projects that we're having, whether they're solar or wind or kind of where things are headed. In doing the sales tax piece, I had a bit of a discussion, because the person who does sales tax also deals with some of these refunds on the renewable side. She had stated that, um, it's fifty or we clarified, I guess, fifty, seventy-five or a hundred, it could be. And it goes for five years, four years plus the current, so that's five years. Um, and they don't have to, the part that we confirmed is, they don't have to specify upfront. Whether they're the one hundred percent or the seventy-five, they can do that at year four and then go back and. As long as they pass the audit of the Department of Revenue. So it's not like we know today that.
This is a seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent.
Potential project, so the sales tax would have set seventy-five.
They might tell us what their, maybe they get disposed to us, maybe what their intentions would be. But there's, they, they, there's no, there's nothing in the Department of Revenue side that says they have to declare, you know, at some point. But there's rules, like, if you get the hundred percent, you have to qualify for butchell and I things and some other parts like that. So I mean, we might know, I suppose, if somebody was close to the project, if you, whether they were getting, whatever those pieces would be, we could know that they.
Well, they would also have to be minority owned.
There's a whole bunch of questions.
That all ranks and what percentages they're getting. I guess seventy-five is a good fair.
So how do we, when we're permitting these things, not, not ask those questions upfront? Like, which one are you shooting for? We have to budget this, you know, for the next few years. How do we get this information that we need, so we're not sitting on dollars and you're sitting at a reserve fund somewhere?
Well, I would think if you just ask the question, you might be able to get the answer, because. You know, when I asked the question to one developer, I got that answer. So. Just asking the question.
I would say in the past, because the current resolutions were working. Yet in the budget.
Yes, it's in the budget resolution.
It's in the, it's in.
The fund.
The fund resolution.
Fund resolution.
It's in the resolution that created the fund to begin.
Right, but at the time of the creation of the fund, seventy-five percent was the highest rebate that was potentially eligible. So out of an abundance of caution.
Right.
We set the resolution that the highest of the seventy-five percent. I'm not suggesting.
And again, when we go through that, it's really hard to get to a hundred percent of those dollars. So in kind of going through and looking at that, and looking at some of these ones of where they get to, we have to go through our sales tax number and go through. We can say, okay, if it's a wind manufacturing company, we can see those pieces maybe coming in by the N A I C code or whatever. But we don't know that they might be getting some building construction costs that might qualify for the overall project or lumped in with just regular construction. There's no way to know how, I mean, without really going in and vetting those out. I, I do think we have been, and again. From the treasurer's perspective and working with other treasurers, I will say, and this was set up before I, this was before I took office. How we kind of started doing this, it's been very pretty. It's been very good, because I know there's other counties that didn't do anything remotely to what we did, and it was very, very painful. Uh, yeah, so, so I think there's also, this is one of those things as to kind of a balance. I don't know we're ever gonna get it at a hundred percent, but I know we want to make sure we try to balance that somewhere. So far seventy-five percent has been working, but I agree with Dave, that that, that's an older kind of method where there wasn't the hundred percent pieces. And we don't see, the one we did miss completely, so I missed on it all for a hundred percent was, we didn't do anything to reserve for the. Like, oh, gas facility that was, um, put in by the P U D, which we had to pay for. So, I mean, that's kind of the balance on this piece is, you know, whether we know they're going or not, we didn't have that one reserved. So, so right now, currently, that's where it is. So what, what I want, my first thought is, is we've got a bunch of these things that are coming. It seems like the renewable energy. Potential legislation, WASC that we're sitting on. There's a lot of things that, you know, we're gonna be going into session here sooner rather than later. What do we need to set as our priorities for some of these things, things that we need to get on the legislative.
Radar.
Radar about saying, look, you're, you're, you're in essence letting these people build these projects and not pay sales tax on them. Um, and we're stuck, you know, collecting sales tax for our portion, you're remitting it to us, and we're sitting on it for four years. And inflation is six percent, we need, we need security about where we're gonna be. And we need legislation that's gonna happen, because over the course of, you know, four years, just sitting on that money at about sixty percent amount. Where we could have put that to use for things.
That's it, the loss values. Until now, but this is. God, I would like to just. Maybe let's give up their share of the money, but they shouldn't be giving up ours.
Yeah.
And I honestly don't know if, if Gina, or even know about this. That was kind of, I think it was when I wanted to have a sit down with Gina, just to kind of explain this. And see if there could be some kind of legislative change that. They can tweak the language, then you can sure get a hundred percent credit on your state portion of it. But we were still passing this.
Preach it to the choir. I think those are ideas to present for sure, I think, you know.
But does the session start in January?
January.
Sure, they're probably doing it now.
That's a perennial, whereas you don't.
I think we should.
You do exemptions, it should be only on the state, it's fine if that's.
Well, I think we should at least wrap it a letter.
Oh, yeah. Because we are agents of the state, so they can. They can.
Yep.
Get rid of our.
Yep.
But I do think.
We're operating.
I mean, I think that's a good idea, because I think this is something that's not gonna be a one shot. It's gonna take time to educate, I mean, just like we were saying, just please bring folks up to speed as to what is happening. The other part that, that's out there, you know, is, and on some of these, I guess. Um. I mean, we, we want to get the, the other, some of these exemptions go the other way, where we don't need to get the money. And they're at the time where they just don't pay the sales tax. And maybe that's another piece to where, that instead of paying the sales tax and going back and asking for it. Maybe there's some kind of way to put it on the front end, so that they would get an exemption for the tax altogether, so that we, I mean, not. Well, just, and we also aren't facilitating the, the, the process. And I'm not saying that we should do that, I, I mean, I'm not in agreement with the tax at all. I guess I'm back to your guys' statement, I think we should be able to keep our county portion, I, I agree with that. But also, we shouldn't have to administer some of this stuff, or the, you know, the D O R wants to provide this at the state level. Then maybe there's an other way, because there wasn't, there are some of the renewable exemptions that are not a refund. They're an actual exemption, so you give it to the solar provider and you just don't pay the sales tax. And so that's another avenue to do it, so that counties aren't ending up with this money and then spending the money, and then five years later having to come back up with it.
Some runs through our books, I have to account for it.
And again, it's kind of a brainstorming kind of thing or thoughts and ideas. I, I definitely think that I, I would support you guys in the fact that I think trying to educate people on what's happening. And as I, as we have more, um, renewable coming in, it's, it's a bit more of a messy process for the counties.
See, I have no doubt they will fix it in time. I just think we'll be following. Fix it. Other counties. Then you're second in line.
Which is really at the state level, that's the thing, I mean, I think it, the number is a big number to us, and that's the one thing. And I think that's the math.
But that's always been the problem, trying to. Get the state folks to understand, it's a little number for you, it's, it's like a policy. You're, you're willing to do it because it's supporting a policy perspective of the state. And you can do it because it's not really costing you much. For us, it's a huge deal for us, but we didn't have any part of the policy discussion. You didn't even listen to us, and yet, for us, we're paid, it's costing us money, and it's, but it's no different than. They do the same thing with property tax exemptions, where they, again, they don't exempt the state's portion of fate across the board. That includes school districts, fire districts, they just waived their, your exam. And now nobody pays, and it's like, wow, you never even talked to idiots. And so you are using our money to implement your policy. That's not right, and they don't care.
So if there's some numbers you guys would like to have to, to, to set those conversations up, or. And, and, and I, I'd be happy to sit in, or what, whatever we could do, I, I'm in, I'm in a great, I mean, I think this is something that needs to be. Brought up to where people are understanding it. I think there's very few counties in the state that are actually dealing with this currently. I mean, I think.
Although I think we have a window of opportunity from. The, some of the other counties that didn't prepare well, and then you talk about the pain. Like, for us, it's like, well, you're fine, because you saw it and prepared for it. And so it's a pain in the butt that we ship this money back and forth, but we actually set it aside and did it. There's other counties, you know, Adams County is the really painful one. Where they were clueless, and the board had changed from the time when the money came in to win. And they were like, uh, what's this?
And it was like.
What happened to our sales tax?
Three or four years late.
It was three or four years. So those stories would matter to some legislators, whether like, this is the impact that you had. I don't think this is what you meant to do, but this is the impact, and that's why you need to fix this. At least for us, this, you know, you can imagine, you know, little county, I think it was, when I was talking to it, it was five or six hundred thousand dollars.
It was a half a million bucks.
It was a half a million dollars that they didn't know, that they had to come up with, that, you know, they're little, they're like our size. And imagine if you.
Were gonna have to halve a, a third of your revenue.
Yeah, your revenue just disappeared, so then put it in the context of the state. Imagine you, a third of your revenue disappeared, that you were unprepared for.
I think, uh, uh, the board needs to work on this, because he's got numbers that I don't have. You've got institutions involved in this that I don't have, so if I try to whip out some kind of letter, I don't have those things. Honestly, we almost need to work on this. And to allow some kind of graph.
Well, plus I think there is a piece to, it's part of the bigger conversation. That, that, you know, that we were able to put, you know, the stuff over the. Taxing of these renewables, this is just another aspect of that overall picture.
Right.
And so this is, and we are getting traction as far as at the state level with other counties where, um.
Well, and I think honestly, I think if, if. Representative Ross or Cory even knew this was rare. I think they would beat the drum with this. Right. Just like, hey, they know it's even, uh. So that's kind of why I wanted to sit down, so if we make and ask questions, but if we can't do that. A policy letter, scream for help, in hopes that they reach out to fully.
Problem. I think, I think the next step is. Data centers and all this, but then you're also looking at the sales tax exemption and all of that. Potential technology equipment that goes in those things. On the county's portion.
Right.
And so it's a big number on all these, and we're sitting here talking about cuts and making all these cuts, we get here's all this potential revenue. That we have sitting in a fund that we can.
Well, we can, I mean, but that's by our choice, so I mean, we could touch it if we wanted to, but we think it's about policy.
For spots.
I agree with you, but I'm just being like, I mean, we're, we're self-prescribing our, our dosage.
You also have citizens that are, that are stating, you know, that this project doesn't do anything for the citizens of this county. If you could say, well, this project has paid one hundred and sixty dollars to the citizens of this county via the sales tax. Versus, no, 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 they're getting, they're getting free. I think there's a push and pull there at the state level of one degree energy projects. Almost.
I mean, that's the challenge of that whole thing, I mean, the, all the, all the, all the generations in the locations that are not on the demand, right? I mean.
Although I, I do think, I think there is, and I saw the interest in that, I mean, there's a reason. That we were able to add this topic to our WASC. Legislative priorities in off-season, because there was recognition on folks on the other side of the mountains. They're like, oh, we had no idea, you know, because they're very pro. Energy, you know, green projects, all that stuff, and they only see that there's no negative downside to it. They were completely unaware, and that's, that's where the help has to really come in.
And so that's.
And we got the property tax part of that, that's sitting right here.
Right, and that's.
The sales tax is turning back.
And so that was another part of the discussion that, in the renewables that we had gotten to on here, was that, I think Dave said this to you guys. Is that there's this piece for a, kind of a, a property tax piece in lieu of, you know, kind of more to. Kind of create some stability with that, um. Property tax group. Um, and so I haven't really had a ton of time to dive into that since Friday. Um, we'll get on that. Right now, we're gonna. But I, I think, uh, I do think that there's some pieces, and I think education is the part. I mean, I do think that, you know, this isn't one of those things, we're gonna go out and beat the drum, and we're gonna be successful in one term of dealing with it. But I do think if we could go out with a consistent message over and over, I mean, I think it's a real issue, and I think it's, you know, I think for us.
But I think we're gonna be pleasantly surprised at how. Receptive Westsiders will be on this issue. Because I honestly don't think they have.
I think the property tax one, I agree. I think the sales tax one's gonna be a harder sell to them, but hopefully they'll give us back our portion of it.
That's all I care.
Right, that's all we want, right.
Well, I, it's not all I want, I want all the smaller logistics portions too, to what the hospital.
But it's property tax, that's not, that's not sales tax.
So.
The state wants to. So what, what the big one I need is, I'm trying to run my numbers back on, you know, this forty-five hundred. And try to figure out, okay, if, I'm sure this makes sense for, for these companies. And then what does that look like when we do our regression over time, if, if we're on a depreciating scale? And what does, over ten years, because it's a ten-year contract, what does that look out, the difference between value and value? And where does that, you know, flip? Because after ten years, you know, it says it here that, that they can not renew that forty-five hundred. If they want to go to a depreciated value, but they've already depreciated the whole thing out after ten years, they're not gonna sign it. That second half, where it's finally starting to go into larva. Uh, there's, there's too many, like, I don't work against it.
But the thing is though, here's the thing, and I think that we're, we're really lucky to have some projects that we can see how that we're going. Because we have some that are out in their fifteen-year period. So we just have to go pull the data, and, and I think we have a lot of data, we just haven't been able to sit and dig into it and really kind of figure out. Like, one of the pieces I have, I, I don't know the actual registered date play on some of them. I can go find that, but I don't have that, but I've never needed that before, because I've never, you know.
Wasn't a factor.
Wasn't a factor, so like, we have a lot of, some of the revenue numbers, we can kind of do some research on them. But there's some elements in the proposal that we're gonna have to track down, to make sure that we're using their registered ones, that everybody has. But I, I, yes, I would agree with that. I, 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 I agree, Jake, I think that's the, that's the part that we, we need to be able to. And I think that's the beauty that we have the history on our side.
Right, and I have asked the, I gave that to the assessor for that exact analysis, was. If we took our current things and ran them through this, how does that compare to how this current system is? You know, if there's not a, if it's, if it's, there, unless there's a benefit to us for stable, the overall. And it's not really fixing. Or, or if we're not burdening the taxpayers. This is a pill rather than.
Right.
Than increase of the value. Right, and so there is a benefit to that from the shift that's not gonna take place as it depreciates. It helps the county, but. Organization. Even with the shift happening, because you're creating a new.
Bottom.
Floor.
Yes, but the taxpayers.
The taxpayers.
They have to pay it.
Probably.
Okay, that's good discussion.
Yeah, it's a good discussion. Another one I had, um, was city away examine that property down there. Um, if we were talking about, you know, selling to them, and they were wondering, can we get that done ASAP, you know, so.
Um, if we were talking about, you know, selling to them, and they were wondering, can we get that done ASAP, you know, so those of this years.
I just talked to, I think it's funny that they, that's what they're sharing with people, but I just talked to what's his name, and he was like, oh, yeah, the, um, what's the the district?
Hat.
Right?
Hat.
Hat, yeah, because I happened to be on jury duty with him at the same time, and he was like, oh, he did have the. Yeah, so I will reach out. Yes, I Pat and I just recently talked about this. So that wasn't part of the finance committee, Jake, so.
And I'm assuming since we've already posted our workshop for Thursday, we don't wanna have this later. On Thursday, we wanna do that on some future date. I don't wanna make terribly for a purpose of like a time to chew on.
That would be at your discretion.
Well, I mean, we can, we can talk about it if you want, I don't know that I. It's not really good at drafting a letter in real time, collecting.
I've heard that.
Yeah, that's. There's a, yeah. But I know, I do, I think it's timely, we need to send something, or at least in some ways communicate with our legislators.
Or we can choose somebody to put up with.
Well, and it it mean, what we need to do is, if you wanna get something done with the legislature. We're serious about some of these, we're willing to put a little bit of horsepower behind it, we can tackle our lobbies. We can get us sitting down with all the legislators on the right committees and have them discuss. That's, that's where it really comes down to, is you could ask your legislator to do something.
They're not on the right.
But if they're on the right committee, or.
Although they're on the minority, they're they're deep into the minority.
Right, nothing's gonna happen, and that's where the lobbyists. We can, that's where we're gonna put our, our time, effort, money over the next three, you know, two months, three months. We're setting it up for next year. But I think this has to be one of our primary purposes moving forward, is raising, raising funds. For the next upcoming few years, we have to look at every option. We can't to get access to some of these dollars that technically are sitting in our, Mr. Treasure. Which was the other question, how much is sitting in that?
I don't know. I didn't.
But six two six.
Um, the other thing we did talk about was regarding sales tax was. Setting up another bars number, um, and we had a discussion about. Setting up for sales tax, having our normal sales tax number and then having a bars number for a one time. Uh, sales tax kit, for example, like a plane, like, um.
Yacht.
A yacht, yeah, or or if there was a bill, you know, if there was some a building or something that came in. Above and beyond that we knew, trying to really kind of be able to keep the line so we could be able to see, oh, it's sales taxes up. And we think that the trending line is up and it's gonna stay there, um, that would be good, and to break out and identify the, these like planes. Right, example, but really just as a.
Or a solar project.
Solar project, sales tax.
It's gonna, it goes at that number, and does it skew our. What our real number is, considering that we had to set seventy five percent.
Right, right, so.
One hundred percent.
Um, and and I think from the auditor, the treasurer, and talking to Jen as well, I mean, we kind of thought that was not a bad idea. Trying to kind of give some basis to what are some of these anomalies, we would have to kind of figure out how we would, how how we would do that. It really would be just another, it would be, we don't wanna make anything really outside of just a way to break out. Those other parts of bases that are more one time hits to revenue that aren't going to be there on a monthly basis. Um, and that was a discussion.
We also talked about some organizations target purchases or expenses to one time funds if we get money. You know, here's a list of one time things that we're looking, you know, to buy, so if you don't get the one time, then you don't, don't necessarily make that purchase, but.
Yes, my other question, on on our, you know, budgeting and what we're seeing for sales tax incoming. Do you take everything that comes in, or and then does that get on one form? And then we do a budget, you know, a transfer from from the pond to the to the reserve pond, or do you cut that out ahead of time?
Right, when I do it, I receive it.
You do it straight to, like, this is what we actually have for income, and there's this, the district.
No, I take the revenue of whatever, a million bucks, I go through and look at the codes of that every single month. Pull those ones out to the percentage, and then put that amount to six two six to the reserve and put the other amount.
Yeah, because right now, it's really only.
Right.
Normal stuff, and then.
You're meaning if we set up another bars number?
You're gonna have to.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying right now, when I, when I look at, you know, what Jen provided me today, like, this is how much we have in in sales tax revenue. Is is that inclusive of the other dollars that we have no access to, or that's got pulled out?
That's pulled out, it's not, that's what, that's why it's a separate fund.
Got.
That's the purpose of it, and that's why it's in a six two six fund, is because the state auditor wants it in a special purpose district fund that's outside of the county.
That's outside of county.
Okay.
That's what I mean.
No, that number is the.
That's the rest of our number that we have.
Yes, but we're still keeping twenty five percent of that. Right, because you're putting twenty five percent of it in where we may not have.
As possible, right.
Although that's pretty hot, so far that bar has been so hot.
So far, we have been okay, but again, I think, you know, we'll see. What's that?
I'm sure we actually have some, we even had, even if the seventy five percent has matured where we actually had freed up. Where we reserved some that we were able, we could ever, ever.
No, it's just sitting in the fund, but we've had some that's aged out past the five years that we, maybe they were, we set seventy five percent and they could only call it. And so there's probably, if we went and looked, that isn't source.
That is, I would.
We may actually have some money that we could actually free up.
But I think because we kind of had some projects that we had to pay out.
We just on, we didn't have.
Yes.
We kind of have left that.
Get in here as a buffer.
Okay, right, it's good. Okay, um.
It's all like institutional stuff.
You're right. Sales tax resolution was provided in the last, um, that packet. Uh, I have sent that off to Ashley at the OR, having her back, because she was gonna look at it, just confirm that if there was something, I I wanted her to look at it before we. Um, anything with with it, just think, I don't want her to call, it's, oh, you need to have this, I would rather she tell us that upfront. Um, surplus sale. So the other day when I was in here and we talked a little bit about that, I didn't have very many numbers because we were still trying to kind of figure out where things were at, where things landed. Um, auctions are a hard thing. I didn't present this, I have this for finance committees, because we talked a little bit about surplus of, we didn't have this number either on Friday. Um, I wanted to go back through and just kind of look and see, it's really hard to compare auctions over auctions over auctions, and I think one of the things, treasures, I've always. Tried to take what my predecessor in the history of the person in the treasurer's shop did to the best of their ability, and to keep improving that as I can. So when I came in in two thousand fifteen, our first auction was in two thousand sixteen, we did it the same way, we had it at the fairgrounds. Um, we spent a bunch of time and effort trying to hit these rigs, moved around, get them inside, did the silent bid process. Um, that auction had forty six lots, eighteen vehicles, and the amount we brought in was thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand five hundred. Um, I did some.
But it was a community event.
It was a community event, that is a true statement, and we did.
People actually, that was a busy year.
Uh, you know, I don't really know, there was a lot of people that came, but I mean, there was maybe a hundred, I suppose, maybe, I don't know, seventy five. I don't remember, I mean, I I was trying to remember about a P L day, so I'm like, that was.
That was a long time.
Yeah. Um, and I did, I went through, and you know, the type of vehicles were there, or varied of all kinds of shapes and sizes and conditions and the 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 the. But we did have, this is the one that hasn't really changed. We did have two senior buses, the ones they drive around the four fifties. Um, we got an average of nine hundred thirty one dollars in two thousand sixteen. Two thousand nineteen, um, we had another one, uh, we, we're gonna try to have them more regularly, but we realized, you know. It's a pain in the rear end, so we finally had to have one, got it in two thousand nineteen. We had forty two lots that time, thirty two vehicles, so many more vehicles than the first time. Um, we brought in twenty six thousand in two thousand nineteen. Uh, the average senior bus went for seven hundred seventy eight dollars.
A trend is not going.
Yeah, I know, but you you obviously know it's gonna get more exciting.
Yeah.
Um, we went to the online auction, I know we've had a lot of challenges and it wasn't perfect, but we had fifty seven lots this time. Brought in a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars on thirty two vehicles. Um, we had some unique things like the ammo that were in there that brought in some pieces, we had the building. Um, we had some trucks that were kind of some high hitters, so it's hard to balance the given, we're making fruit salad. But a senior bus this time on average was seventy thousand dollars.
Doing right.
And they had no mileage, they had no, you know, yeah.
See, I remember one of them being up at the seven thousand range, and I thought they were, they were at twenty five, so.
Yeah.
They must have got up there towards.
It could have, and I, I, these are just kind of somewhere, you know, we, I mean. Everything seems to be a little higher, the the crown picks, we got another couple hundred bucks on some of the reused, um. Uh, police cars, halftime pickups.
Is proof that it was a success.
Yeah, and so, so we will continue to build on this, like I say, I think, I I've, we've been up there, Adrian and I, that's one reason it's off Friday. After the finance committee, we had that for our first pickup day, we had a pickup day yesterday, I think, taking today off, and we'll be up there at the morning. And then we're gonna try to finish it up on Friday, um, but we're probably up forty percent through the pickup. Most everybody, I, I guess my big question is, is this like other county, you know, I don't, I'm not on the other side, how is this, how does this compare to other counties? But our process, because we've been pretty sticklers on setting up a time for pickup, can't just stop, we're trying to kind of keep people spread apart, trying to kind of bounce. Everybody seems to think it's been, uh, it's normal, we have a lot of people that are by all over the county, the state, we've had Spokane, we've had Seattle. We've had Vancouver, well, I mean, it's, it's been, we're gonna have a person come from Missoula, Montana. Um, I'm not sure why, but anyway, they wanted something so there.
How much a hundred seventeen thousand, how much has been paid?
All of it, except for one thing. The building. So the building, the first bidder for the building did not pay, so we're on to the second bidder, so we're working on that.
Put a deposit.
Uh, I believe, so I don't know, I I didn't check that deep, I'm more worried about just getting somebody to bid on it and invest in it and get it down here. Hope at this point, so we moved on to the second person, there is a long list of bidders on the building, so it's not just like there's three people and we're gonna be done. But I'm I'm really hopeful, I've already contacted the person, and so we're gonna continue. So that's a really unique thing.
That happen if somebody bids like that, you obviously know who won the building.
Yep.
And change their mind. They get blackballed.
Um, so I will tell you how I'm gonna handle this, and and I would, I'll be honking it. If it was on a vehicle, I would blackball them, for sure, a hundred percent, if it was on, if there was any kind of other vehicle on there. This is such a unique situation, I'm not gonna blackball the person right away, but if we have some more challenges or this other thing happens, then yes, I probably would do that. But that is one of the things about the auction, we do have the ability to hone into our auction as the county, so we can have. If we have problems with specific bidders, um, then we can say, hey, this person's, and then we can also see where they've been blackballed at other auctions. So it is a transparent process, and so far we've been doing pretty well. Um, we have had a couple people that have been out and kicked out of other auctions for really weird, and again, you don't know what the circumstances are everywhere else. The building, though, I'm not gonna, this person, I'm not gonna say, okay, no, it's a very unique situation. Um, but I do think we'll be able to get there, so I, we didn't, you know, we still have some dollars hanging out standing on that. But even if you took out some of these bigger things, we still made ten to fifteen, to maybe twenty thousand dollars more when you're looking at the dollars. So I think that it was a success, so far folks have been very good about coming to pick the things up. Um, we, uh, so, so again, we're just kind of a little, little heads up on that, we, we will improve it. We've talked, I think we all have a lot of great ideas on how to make it better, but overall, I think it was pretty easy, and the people that are buying these things. They are, they know what they're doing, I mean, they come in a tow truck that's got the slide off deck, and they just hook up with the car, pull it on, drive out, say thank you, and see you later. Um, so, you know, most people, wherever they come, if they are gonna drive it, they have a whole car back with tools and the whole night. They, they brought batteries already, they brought, you know, the whole, they're, they're set, this is, this is what they.
Nobody's complaining.
So far, no.
Oh, all right.
So. Yep, and 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 again, you know, we talked about it, and you know, they're like, it was just really weird, and I said, you know, here's the situation, we didn't know what the vehicle. Mileages were, it was best to leave them unknown, and some of these cars have been out here because of COVID, we didn't really do anything during the twenty twenty, we didn't even have a discussion about. The the whole thing, so, you know, I, and so, yeah, there was some confusion about that, but I think that's only gonna help us to make things better if we can have some of that. But yes, so, so far, everything's been paid for, except for the building, we're still working on that, but that's. What's that?
If we ever found the car that was missing.
We, like, all of them are identified, yep, so we will probably do something with those after the first of the year. Um, they were all shares vehicles, and we've got them all filed in, so we've secured all the assets, we will move them to this location. As soon as these are gone, but I don't wanna create more confusion, um, so I put my eyes all for them. So that's good news.
That question.
Yes, sir.
Another question, I'm looking at, um, this year fiscal services team shows that fines and penalties. Usually were ten year average of six hundred fifty eight thousand dollars we bring in. They're currently at negative ninety eight thousand five twenty three, can you explain that?
What, what is that?
Fines, fines and penalties. Now, usually it shows for six hundred fifty eight on the ten year rolling average, twenty twenty was four hundred sixty eight.
And that's in property taxes?
Uh, no, I think this is fines and penalties, yes.
I think it's total fines and penalties, which has to do with law enforcement.
I think it has to do with law enforcement, so.
They weren't doing.
I'll have to look.
But how could it be taken?
That's on Jen's great work.
Yeah.
You need money back.
And it's how much, what's the negative?
Ninety eight thousand five hundred. I wonder if it's that, that possibly.
And that's.
Late and stuff, yes, as a. Seven or seven. We could have the ass, Jen, it's.
Yeah, I'll.
There's a minus three hundred thousand.
That's odd that we, yeah, oh, we'll have to look into that. Um, let's see. Ready to give us an update on the state audit, and she's hoping that that will be finalized in the next week, and we'll be able to submit our final. Audit to the state. And then our next meeting will be twelve twenty nine, which is rescheduled for the, um, holiday. We're still on track for a foreclosure sale on February fourteen. And I have the white sand and proper Jake, I won't forget.
Have we figured out where we're at with the titles on that triangle piece of Dallas?
You know, we have not, we kind of got waylaid on some of these other things, and and we are gonna go through, kind of clean some of those things up. I was just talking to the first about that the other day, we have a triangle piece in, um, Dallasport. We have, we had a discussion, I guess, at the end of the finance committee about the building in Lyle. Or Dallasport, the school, yeah, which that we kind of figured that out. Um, so that we have the triangle piece and we have the mill site, those are still two that we are.
And right now, the mill site is by far my priority because the. Fisheries enhancement groups and all those people are starting to come together with their designs on what they would like to see that property be, and we need to know what we can.
And I think it's as much that as also the dollars that we spent on it, where who's hated what as far as the trust.
Right.
That's the, the one thing, I think, that's, we wanna make sure we hear out any.
But I don't want, we need to have a meeting with the community. Right now, we're behind the all of the already trying to design, be in your, do what they wanna do with our property. If we let them get too far ahead of our mission, then they're gonna say, well, this is what we were designed, we made all the engineering contracts, I told you. This is what we wanna see happen in the community. So that's really high on our priority, my priority.
Okay, so the final thing I have is the excise tax. I have not had a ton of time to, I I got the question, I understand the question. Um, a couple of things are going on, um, and and I haven't really, I don't watch a lot of the real estate, they come to the counter, they go through. We do them electronically now, so I'm not really an expert, sure, they're just moving through. I read the article in the paper too that said that the, the, the sale was completed. And that's not a truth, that that, that's a true statement from the sale and the 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 the, but that doesn't, that's not a true statement from all the processing of the reads. So I just got off the phone before I came in here, um, most of them are supposed to be coming in. So I just got off the phone before I came in here. Um, most of them are supposed to be coming in this next week, it sounds like. Um, but then as I was going through that, we were talking about it, most of those are gonna come in as a ten dollar REIT fee. There's a whack on the, or. Of a, uh, REIT exemption, because they are, which I should have thought this in the beginning. More than likely how this transaction's gonna happen is it's gonna be a controlling interest transaction. It's gonna be reported to the Department of Revenue. So the Department of Revenue does all the bigger controlling interest. So if you sell something from somewhere, we get local. Excise tax from the state because they take their part out, and um, this happens, I'm trying to think, we've had some happen here and there.
Where are we gonna get our, our exit, our local exit?
We are gonna get a portion, but I believe that the mill site is also going, is in TCA too, and that is Vinge. I believe Vinge is getting.
Vinge will get their part of it. We ain't worried about that.
Right, and so at this point in time, there is some money that she's thinking that will come. There is four hundred twenty thousand on timber. There's two different pieces. So this is a pretty complex piece. So she thought there was an amount of about four twenty, and then she thought that there was another one, but, but the Vinge part, if it would go to the local TCA. It wouldn't come to. So, so I haven't seen how they're going, but I know that these, some of these parts and pieces, so if the controlling interest paperwork, and I didn't call the B R. To find out what the story is on that, or whether that's been filed. I don't know the legalities of it or where it goes. So we are going to get some money. But it's not gonna come directly from the counter, um, which is how a lot of our REIT money comes in, because they come in and pay. And then we take our portion and send the rest of it to the state. This is gonna come the other way.
So the bottom line is it hasn't.
We haven't seen it, and it's probably not gonna happen until twenty twenty two.
Right, so you're saying four hundred twenty thousand is our portion?
Yeah, I, I'm saying that these numbers are really rough. I'm saying that she had, she thought that there was one that was on there, because there's like. There, I think it's twelve hundred documents is the, one of the recordings that we're working on doing. I mean, we do typically ten pages maybe in our office per transaction. It's like one of them's twelve hundred page. So there's a lot of pieces. So it sounds like the bottom line is, we don't know the exact number. But there's, it, there's a four hundred twenty thousand that's maybe with one of the transactions. I haven't seen it. I was just talking to the title company that's processing it. And they're getting ready to bring them through. There's a bunch of, see, they've also processed a bunch of other transactions through the office. It had been back in October. But apparently these were pieces that they were moving or at their, however the deal structure, I don't know, and I don't, we're just process the property as they come through. And transfer them. So, cause I had thought that we'd seen all them come through, but that's not the case. The big ones are gonna come through in the next.
Cause there's also, there's what the family separate, they don't, they.
I think that's that they just, they dated some other pieces to get everybody, all the shareholders what they needed, and I think that happened in October.
And that came through us?
That came through us, and we've already got some numbers, if all the pieces are right. But I know that there's additional. Um, excise taxes that are, or REITs that are gonna come through in the next two or two. And I don't know about the controlling interest paperwork, where that's like, or how that's been submitted.
But with that controlling interest paperwork, they could, they, there's a whack, they could.
Well, because see, what they're gonna do is they're gonna change the name of the company, and then they're gonna have a cisterne underneath the, they're just gonna change the property, be more than likely through the back. Again, I, I, I know some attorney somewhere is figuring, this is a large enough transaction, and I'm sure somebody's, however they're going to be that. So it's not like they're gonna walk in all of these, and they're gonna pay the REIT on every one of them. There's a, the company is selling, so there's a controlling interest paperwork. That's gonna go to, so it's not gonna come in like a normal sale, and it hasn't been reported.
You know, a way that they can, is there something in a lack that they can do a controlling interest paperwork change to the void?
No. Yeah, I mean.
Make it sure.
No, 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 no. I mean, but, but, but once the controlling interest paperwork changes, like we had another entity here a while back. That sold the controlling interest. It was a fifty one fifty, okay? Well, the name stayed the same on the property, so the property still has the same name, but what changed was who owns. Company A.
But they had to pay their REIT.
They had to pay their REIT.
So that, I guess that's the bottom line. I, I mean, there isn't some way they're gonna.
My understanding, yes.
And we.
But I still contend that there is some. There is some that is going to go to the city of Vinge. I keep wanting to reiterate that. I would think a significant amount, yes. Cause I, I'm pretty sure the way I look at the maps, that that is in TCA two. And we do, we do, if somebody walks into the counter, the treasures office, we collect that for them, but we send that and submit that to them once a month. Usually about the fifteens. That's all I have.
Okay.
Any other questions for the treasure? Hey, thank you, sir. Okay, I, we're gonna. We're checking them out one at a time. Uh, prosecuting attorney, Mr. Caddell, are you? How do you think for the board?
Hi there. Um, so, um, we're finalizing.
You're still muted, sir.
I'm not muted, actually. Uh, can you hear me?
Muted, everybody.
Don't hear you, Mr. Caddell. I see your mic moving when you talk, which means you're actually unmuted, but we can't hear you for some reason.
Okay.
So you're probably unmuted, but I don't understand either. Try again or calling on your phone, or that's happened to me before.
Okay. Okay, can folks hear me now?
There you go.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, um, we're finalizing our petition to the Supreme Court. It's, it, it, once it's filed, I'll circulate some copies. Um. We're um, scheduled for a conversation, I think, involving my office on Thursday morning with the. Water hauling, trucking, cisterne, what, what, what have you. Um, we, we, we can move forward with the preliminary. Preliminary discussion. We don't have um, a lot of final answers right now. We have, the, the more we're digging in this, the, the more. Uh, complicated and concerned um, that we've become. Um, so we did meet with um, the environmental health. Um, specialist this morning. Uh, there was some, initially, there was some, um, thought that um. The, whether we were ready for a conversation or not, I, I, you know, I, I think we defer to the, the board on that. It might be good to get some. Some things, um, probably not necessarily on the same page, but at least get people in the same um, room. As to what is possible and what's feasible uh, moving forward, because I think there's some ideas getting floated around that are just um. Uh, it, it's difficult to fathom how they could be implemented uh, with our current state of regulations and staffing resources. So. Uh, you know, that we'd like to know a little bit more about what is, um, what is the, the goal that is trying to be achieved and. You know, whether um, we can provide um, any more definite guidance on how to, how to get there. I mean, it, it might be worthwhile. To have the conversation also might be worthwhile to shell that at the beginning of the year until we can get some more involvement from other folks too. I think Ms. Quinn wants to be involved, and probably. Uh, Ms. Lynn Blythe definitely needs to be involved and so forth. So I'll defer to the board on that. Um, but we're. We're able to move forward with at least a preliminary or moderate level of discussion at this point. Um, but um. And, and to be honest, you, you know, I, I think there'd be one or two of you that um, are not going to like or appreciate. The conversation from our perspective anyway, so um, I'll defer to you guys how you want to move forward on that.
I mean, I'm in favor of having, at least getting the conversation, where we've been scheduled, we've, uh, we've rescheduled a couple times. I think at the, at the very least, the board needs that discussion itself, so I'm, believe me, I'm fine with uncomfortable conversations. I will put the, I will.
No, we need to have the conversation, because, you know, I think, I think we know where public health is at. I kind of wanna know where you're at. So I, I think to have a conversation.
Yeah, yeah. So let's, let's go, let's plan on going ahead with the caveats you provided, that we understand that. Uh, for Thursday, we'll, we'll start the conversation.
Okay.
All right, anything else, Mr. Caddell?
Uh, this time, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, there's a lot.
Been a full day.
Always still gotta figure out, um. Appointments of border health and following all those rules, correct? But it's four thirty, so you know. Also returning. Border Health stuff.
I did attach the RCW legislation too as well.
I believe we will, and I'm shooting from the hip here. It's been a while. I think we will have to add. Citizen member to the board now.
So what, I'll give you my take. So we guys are gonna have to go six. They, they're, one of those is gonna be a tribal. Let's call it position six. So right now, we got five. We're gonna need to have a position six. Not position six, it's gonna be. By a tribal. Called by the tribe. So really, we're only dealing with the five. The problem with the five is the citizen to. Have to be, there's three different categories. And customers of public health, public healthcare facilities, providers, and then citizens of large. You can't have more than one from a certain category until you have one from each. So right now, we have two healthcare officials. And that's category one. So we're eventually gonna have, say, one healthcare. And citizen in large or veteran, or something from one of the categories. That's our reason.
Well, can you, I mean, you could be a citizen at large, but also be uh, the physician's assistant.
I think you're pushing the legality of how this is.
Because there's lots of times when you serve on two different.
Or, right, but they want, right, but the, their purpose of this, and, and if, if that's where you're going, you'll have to contact. Los Act, because they put a lot of time in every work. Is the, the purpose for them writing this is they wanted. Different opinions from different groups, advocacy groups, victims, well, uh, you know. Welfare groups, community-based organizations, nonprofits, business community, environmental health. So my point is, I don't think our current two. Both get it sometimes. Eventually come July, this is implemented. The one of them is seated through the other twenty two. And there is one person that is applied to be on the table. But it's my reputation. But even if that reputation is chosen, whichever one of these three is chosen. Our second appointee is gonna be, be one of these other categories, category two, category. Not all for the next category. Can't double up on a category. One from different categories. Actually, there's four. There was somebody else applied six months ago or something. And they're. I have a number six. I don't see a ticket step where we have. This top one, I bet, rocks available. If they. That's not them, that person's science.
Okay. I mean, I wanna do. I wanna, I wanna provide myself, the tribal one, I'm particularly interested in, if you recall that, but yeah, it's like.
So yeah, I sat through. Yeah, it's kind of one of those. We haven't moved on it, so I'm trying to dig the comments out.
It evolved during the session a lot, because it started, it was way, it was really bad when it started. Just basically got rid of local control, any, any local, anything. So, okay, that's, that's one.
So let's go.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I believe that you're one of your current board members. Term expires December thirty first of this year. Did you guys wanna make a decision? Or make a direction on how to move forward? Without a couple more meetings in this month.
I don't know if I seem majority to. But I, because I mentioned it before.
For all this was. brought to light. We had already prepared. To replant an existing one, because she had applied, but now I just.
So my answer was nothing against her and nothing against the current ones that are seated there. But I think everybody deserves a chance to just. So I. Where should be, be appointed this job, John Groot, master of the tribal government of Alabama. Physician. Be like that.
I'm worried of the same category though.
So essentially, come June, if, if the board chose to go this way, this would be. The category of physician, and then come July, our other one that's currently appointed. Would need to be changed down with one of the other.
So you're basically, your, your criteria for appointment is just somebody that's not. You just said, just, like, I, I look, things I, again, we're not doing this today. I was not prepared to do this today. Maybe, maybe I agree with you, I don't know, but I don't necessarily like the disqualifier that you're currently doing. So. I don't know, I, maybe you'd say that was necessary, the disqualifier, I'm just saying. What it sounded like, everybody deserves a chance.
Get a choice to sit on a board. They're actively want on the board. It's not like we're removing somebody that's only been there for two years. Were there for six to seven, you said for sixteen.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Sometimes experience has value. Institutional knowledge has value.
Disagree. But um also not. I also think twofold, I think both versus representatives from that side of the counter. I think there is uh value in uh. A different perspective from the other side of the counter.
Now, we should try to, we should try to have geographical diversity. I. I agree.
I'm hoping that this person of their college will. Teacher almost first said, be more involved and see more, have more than, help us more. Yeah.
Okay, well, first thing we're going to have to do is. Run ads because we have to fill at least one position with somebody that's from one of the other categories. So if we don't have a list of people to choose from, we need to advertise. We don't need to go out there and try to.
Right, the that, that one isn't a mandate. It's going to be whoever we want.
But then July first, is it after their appointment expires, the next time you have to do it, or is it July one? The board has to meet the.
Criteria.
Criteria by July first.
Say the first thing you do, start meeting the criteria now so that we're ready for July first.
And that's what I'm saying is that, you know, whoever. Be appointed in January needs to be within the criteria so that we got it figured out, so we're ready to go. But that doesn't get us to having the thing.
Your choice. Because I know if that choice is made to have outside citizens control in July. Still have one pass, only choice will be medical professor, professional on the board.
What else is on here?
Most of it we don't get into because we got to talk about radio.
You just looking at the.
Is her list yet? Some of that.
You guys are still waiting. Hopefully we'll get updates on the request for waiver of the Title XII. Vote standards and petition on stock removal.
I didn't see on Facebook. We still didn't get with public verse to get the building under contract.
Okay. You've done enough.
Well, what I take out here is the. Speaking about that area up there. County Drive. I heard that uh. The timber company has built a new sixty big fly road up there.
Yeah, that's a part of the past. Opera.
But it's long that same.
Same road, right? Clear.
Yeah. It still has.
Right, right.
And they're going to break it in it.
They're going to go through that.
Okay, with that.
All right, with. Go with it or there, make a motion to. Uh, during today and uh shake up uh our workshop on.
Second, you have a motion to second to during the regular meeting, uh, we will. Workshop at nine o'clock on Thursday. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have the motion passed this.